Thank you for all coming this evening. And even though it's our regularly scheduled time, we have quite a different agenda today. Mr. Stotter and I have had numerous conversations to come up with an agenda that I think will help us look forward for the upcoming year and to give us opportunities to discuss our priorities. As you may have noticed, we have made a decision to call it "An Advance" as opposed to a Retreat. I think we have the objective of looking forward as opposed to trying to focus on looking back. Now, obviously Retreat has more than one meaning, but I wanted to be in the mood of how do we advance our goals? How can we achieve the things that are important to us? And I thought that by renaming it "An Advance" as opposed to Retreat would be appropriate in this case. So, a little play on words there, but I think it speaks to what our focus should be as a commission over the next year specifically and then maybe the next couple. What we have here are four main items. Paul has put a bunch of times to them. I'd really like to state these times while this is an open discussion. I don't want to have this drag on all evening, and so if we are going longer than these, I'm going to try to say, "Let's move to the next topic," or "Let's wrap it up," just out of respect for everybody's time. And I think the times that Paul has put on here are pretty reasonable for us to cover what we need to cover. We've got a few administrative items we're going to do really quick, then we're going to grab some food, and then we're going to go through some of the things that we went through on last Monday, or I guess two Mondays ago, in terms of the priorities that we have, and then talk about the speaker series, and then some of our guidance, get some guidance on when we get various applications, what sort of things the Planning Commission should be looking at, and guidance from the staff as to how we can better move these projects in the direction that we're looking for. So, I think what the planning staff has put together is a really helpful document so that when we get these site plans, or when we get subdivisions, or when we get special exceptions, we have a rubric for how to look at them a little bit more critically and what sort of things can be helpful. So, that's a new document that's been created, and I'm excited about having it and using it as a new tool for us to be a bit more critical and help us in that process and speed along. So, let's do these administrative items really quick, and then I will quickly turn it over to Mr. Stotter to take us through the many items we have on our agenda. So, in terms of the first item, we have the contact information. I know mine was incorrect at some point during this year. I don't know if people have made some adjustments, but let's get this all squared away, and then we will be able to share it with everybody. I don't have Rob's information, so...
So, what I've... Well, what Ms. G has prepared for tonight. Mr. Chair is a blank form for everybody to go ahead and enter their information. Email, phone number, and home address. And these are all the phone number and the email where you would like to be contacted for Planning Commission business. So, if you have questions during the day about a package item and you want someone to follow up with you, this is the contact information we need to be able to reach you.
Okay. I'll... Let's move forward, and I'll pass this around quickly. All right. The next item is Board and Commission appointments. Well, why don't you give us an update, and then we'll... Item C, I know, is the most pressing of these things, but why don't you?
In your package tonight, labeled as attachments 1B and 1C, it's a chart titled "Planning Commission Liaisons." It looks like this. This is the recap of where the group was at the end of their first official January meeting in terms of the Boards and Commissions in the left-hand column and the Planning Commission Liaisons in the right-hand column. The middle column, again, in addition, a very helpful one, I think, from Ms. G, when these groups typically meet. There are several groups that do not have an appointed liaison. Most, I think you mentioned 1C, Mr. Chair, the Library Board of Trustees listed three up from the bottom. That's a group that specifically reached out and requested a liaison appointment because they have the Library CIP project coming through. They'd like to have someone who's familiar with the project and can help guide it through the application and review and approval, ultimately approval, process. So, I think the cleanup here is to assign members to groups without liaisons and then, I think, take an action. I think a motion would be appropriate for formalizing this as the Planning Commission's liaisons for the calendar year.
Okay. Yeah. Now, we adjusted us the first meeting. At that time, Rob, you weren't with us, and we had sort of tabled some of this because there was some uncertainty, and I don't think we had addressed the library issue back then. So, let's... This is... I know that I have...
I've been on the CACT. I'm not listed there, but...
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I've been on there. I will say I have not been able to attend, you know, the majority of their meetings just because the timing was difficult for me on Wednesdays. But... So, if someone else wants that, you know, I could swap. I don't know. But, yeah, I have nominally been the liaison last year. I'm not listed. I don't know why I'm not listed. I get their emails, so I know I'm listed somewhere.
And Ross, you would be the EDC, right? So, that should be there.
I've been going to those.
The two of you.
Yeah. I'm on a bunch of committees that...
Yeah, right.
The Campus Coordinating Committee was sort of defunct at this point. I mean, I don't know that it's formally been sunsetted, but it has turned into that...
Campus Coordinating Committee.
Yeah.
Is that the new name of it?
Yeah.
It used to be, what was it?
Economic Working Group is what it was previously.
I appreciate you tracking that for me.
Okay.
But, it is... Yeah, it's the same times and things like that. And then, so let's just list the ones we got. We've got the Architectural Advisory Board. I know that used to be QUAFO, so that's just an empty spot. Human Services Advisory Council, and the Tree Commission. I did not feel like that was empty either, but...
I've been on the Tree Commission.
So, your name should be here, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that sounds right.
Unless somebody else wants it. I'm happy to do it.
Does someone want to take the CACT more available on the Wednesdays?
I mean, I could take the CACT because I can do Wednesdays.
Okay. And you have your name on a lot of them. Is there one that you want to give up for the...
Do you want to switch to HARB? Or...
I could do that.
HARB doesn't meet that much because most of it's hard.
Yeah, I could do that. I'm happy to do that, and I have, you know, some background in that, so I could... Yeah, I'm happy to do HARB this year.
Yeah. Well, if you do HARB, you might as well do Historic Commission because a lot of times a meeting has to meet back-to-back.
Ah.
So, you might as well just take the both.
Buys the fun.
Yep.
Is it free to that?
Sure.
Okay.
And Andy, you're going to do the Economic Development Council?
Yes.
You're already doing it.
I'm going to hit those.
And Rob, do you have one? There's the Architectural Advisory Board, the Human Services Advisory Board, and the Library Board of Trustees. Since... Is there one or more than one you're interested in more than the other?
Nope. Whatever.
Does anybody want to do the Library Board? That's typically been a topic of passion on this... Previously, on this commission. No one wants to...
I'm full.
You are definitely... You're always full. Your name is everywhere.
Yeah.
Nobody else wants it.
I can do it.
I can do it.
You don't have anything, so you get first.
Right of refusal.
If you want it.
Okay.
I was just going to do it if no one else was.
All right. So, then we got... Just have the Architectural Advisory Board and the Human Services.
Isn't that what HARB is? What's HARB?
HARB?
HARB is Historical Architecture Review Board.
Architectural Advisory.
Historic Architecture Review Board. Okay. Not the Architectural.
Do you want the Architectural Advisory Board also?
No.
Not to interject into the conversation.
That's a Wednesday, though. I think you said Wednesday.
That's the Historic Architectural.
Yeah, that's what... You're the two back-to-back history ones.
Here's my acronyms. ARB, HARB. Okay. I'll be HARB. Okay. Now, leave me where I am.
And they don't have...
All right. Fourth Thursday, that's better.
Forums half the time.
All right. We need... Architectural Advisory Board, they are an active committee, I believe. I mean, they have a lot of say on these. Okay? I mean, if there's no other volunteers, that's appreciated. We are... And then we have the Human Services Advisory Council we need to fill.
What is it? You're taking CACT?
Yeah.
Generally, so, Human Services, so Accessibility Needs, Elderly Population Needs. There is also a Housing Commission, and often the two groups do overlap in terms of interests, affordability, low-income issues.
Not often.
I can do it.
I'm on the Housing Committee.
All right. Well, we're going to take you up on that.
It's rare that we have joint meetings.
Oh, I'm not saying joint meetings. I'm saying subject matter.
Overlap and interests.
Okay. Interests. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So, Rob's going to do that one, and I think that fills this out.
It does. Would you like me to run down what I heard just to confirm?
Sure.
So, I've got Mr. Stevens on the AAB, Ms. Hockenberry on the Arts and Humanities Council, Mr. Wodisca on the Campus Coordinating Committee, Ms. Teetz on the CACT. Jointly, Ms. Hockenberry and Mr. Stevens on the EDA.
Have fun.
Mr. Rankin on the Economic Development Council, Mr. Stevens on the ESC, Mr. Krasner on both the HARB and the Historical Commission, Ms. Hockenberry on the Housing Commission, Mr. Puentez on HSAC and the Library Board, Ms. Hockenberry again on the Wreckin Parks Advisory Board, and then Mr. Stevens on the Tree Commission.
That does...
First one, Mr. Stevens on the AAB.
Fantastic. Thank you, everybody, for volunteering for those. Could I get a motion just to recognize that?
Mr. Chair, some moved.
A second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Hearing none. Passes unanimously. The ayes have it. Okay. And we finished our administrative stuff. We can eat.
Motion to eat.
All right. So, the way we see this happening is we just bring it here and continue on while eating while you're speaking.
Yeah.
Not stopping and...
No, no, no. I think the Planning Commissioners, if you all grab your pizza and water, if you don't already have some, bring it back to your seats, and then staff will make their way up as time allows, and all guide the conversation through the remaining items.
Yeah. Let me just say, I was remiss in not thanking everybody from the staff for coming here this evening and helping us out through this. I think it's important... Mr. Stotter and I talked about it, and it's important for you to hear what we're trying to do this year and to hear what our priorities are, and I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to this on a meeting while you otherwise wouldn't have to attend, so thank you for doing that. All right. Mr. Stotter, let's move over to item number two.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as I know there have been some fluctuations with the mic in terms of whether they work with the button pressing or whether they pick you up automatically, I understand from Trevor, who's our technician for the evening, that they do operate just on voice alone, so no hitting the button. It'll just pick you up.
I already told it. I hate it.
Do I have that right?
Got it.
All right. And then, I know we've got some new faces around the table, both on the Planning Commission side as well as for some of you on the staff side, so I just want to start the retreat by going through and having the staff introduce themselves. I guess we'll start here, and then we'll work our way around to the back of the room. Paul Stotter, Planning Director with the city. And one of the things that attracts me to urban planning, I guess, is the ability to really interact at the community level and have good community involvement and think about the future of a place's needs. And one of the things I really enjoy about working with Falls Church is the sense of place that it has, that it's a small community where you can get to know the people that you're working with.
Gary Fuller, Deputy Planning Director. The area that I concentrate in is the development review side of things and current planning.
Harley Aubrey, Principal Planner, primarily development review, but also some long-range planning.
And also one of our leads on the West Falls Church project.
Akita Ruzi. I'm also in development review, but I also have a hat in zoning as well, so...
Carrie Odenino, Planner, mostly transportation.
Carrie is, for those of you who remember the presentation, is leading the implementation of the bike share effort. She's also the staff face on a lot of our regional transportation coordination as well as many of our grant applications. Deborah?
Deborah G., Planning Commission, Plurk, and Staff Liaison to HARB and Historical Commission.
Lauren?
Lauren Bruce, under Carrie, and will be working on transportation, excuse me, demand management.
This was the TDM, Transportation Demand Management. This is very exciting for the city going forward. First time we applied and we won, I think, thanks to a lot of Carrie's phone calls, a operating grant for transportation demand management, which will involve a lot of marketing and outreach, and Lauren is going to be carrying on a lot of that work over the next several months.
Who was the grant from?
The grant was through the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation, Virginia DRPT.
Great.
Okay. So, with introductions...
You're going to do the Planning Commission.
Oh, I guess we could have the Planning Commission introduce themselves as well.
Russ Wodisca. And one of the things that I really enjoy about this, I've been doing it about 10 years, is just having an impact on a city like ours that the size of it allows for seeing a difference in a real immediate manner and driving around and feeling like I contribute in some small part and some small way to the buildings as I drive by. You know, as we go one by one, I feel like I've had some role in that, and that's very rewarding to me.
Andy Rankin. I think I've been doing Planning Commission since 2012. Before that, I did four years on the EDA, and I enjoy it because I live and I have a business in the city and want the city to succeed, and it's kind of like playing Real Life SimCity. That's pretty cool. Yeah. So, I've just enjoyed, you know, trying to help things move forward.
Melissa Teetz. I'm trying to think when I... I was on it about two years before you, Andy, so a little bit earlier.
Before me.
A little bit before me.
Yeah.
Like 20 years.
No, we were together. We went to planning... We were training together.
We did the Planning Commission school together. It was so much fun. But, anyway, we had too much homework. But, and then before that, I was on the ESC, and I actually still run the Habitat Restoration Task Force, which is part of the ESC, because when I left, no one else wanted to run it, so... And I've been running it forever, so since 2007. So, and I work with the City Arborists and the Landscape Prue and the Urban Forest guys and stuff, so that's fun. I just really want to get our area plans done, and since we haven't gotten them done, I'm still here. Because I think they're really the most important features. I'm also very happy to see all the buildings because, like Andy, I have a... We own a business in the city, and more people is better for our business, so that's good.
I'm Lyndy Hockenberry, and I've been on Planning Commission now since '08. Before that, from 2000 to 2008, when I got de-elected, I was on City Council. I was Vice Mayor for four years. Before that, school. Crazy sixth graders. But, anyway, I love to get things done. I like... I love change. I like to see things completed. I get really excited about all the new buildings and everything. I just... I think we've done really well in the things that we've gotten done, with a few exceptions as some of the parking garages, like this one. But, yeah, and I just love to be part of things, and I want a new high school, and I want to see that sucker built.
Okay. Tim Stevens, a former business owner, have keen interest in seeing commercial development occur in the city, have a strong environmental interest, and have learned over time that land use decisions have a huge impact on environmental outcomes. So, the Planning Commission is where it's at, I think, when it comes to land use decision. Let's see. I'm taking the Planning Commissioner's course, and now you tell me there's too much homework a couple of weeks ago before I signed up.
No, 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 no. It's good for you.
Okay. Thanks.
No, it renews your brain.
You forget all about it because I don't remember it.
I'll remember it.
All right. I'm Brent Krasner. Like a lot of the staff, I'm a urban planner, and so these kind of issues are near and dear to me, so I'm a real glutton because I do it during the day and then at night as well. I work, you know, as people know, I worked during the day out in Fairfax County, our big brother to the west, and north and south, kind of surround us on these sides. But, I've always been also interested in local government. I was, when I... Before I even moved to Virginia, I volunteered on local boards and commissions up in New Jersey, where I'm originally from. I moved to the city in 2011. I was on the BZA for three years, and then got... I don't know if I got arm-twisted, got promoted, demoted to come over here, but here I am, and I'm very excited to be on the boards. It'll be my second year on the commission, rather. I think of myself as... I'm a big-picture guy, but as I've gone through my career, I've become very, you know, interested in the nitty-gritty and zoning and development review, and so I hope that especially on those types of days where we're dealing with some of the, you know, the applications that we confront, I can be of assistance to this body and the city at large.
Rob Puentez. I've been a Planning Commissioner for about hour and a half. It's very similar to what I do for a living nationally, so it's great to do it here. On the local level where I live, this is a really exciting and interesting time for the city and the region, so I'm glad to be a part of it.
But, you might mention you were on before.
Second tour. Second tour. So, if you liked the stuff that came before, you don't like it.
All right. Brent.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So, in your packets, the first item up is a memo and a couple of attachments. The subject of the memo is Planning Commission 2018-2019 Work Plan. Looks like this. And let me walk through the memo, and then I'll get to the attachment. So, one thing I want to stress is that... Or one thing I want to raise, bless you, is that as we went around the table, what I heard from a lot of people is a desire to see things get done, and a work plan can be a good tool for making that happen. And so, it's a strategy for charting out the things you want to do, taking account of resources, and then getting a commitment from the group in terms of the package of things that the group as a whole is going to try and move forward. So, as we look at the work plan, I think a couple of questions to raise. Are the right categories and topics shown? Are there the right priorities? And then, are we showing enough detail? Are there more or fewer things you'd like to see in terms of whether it's deliverables or milestones, or are some of the topics too vague? Planning Commission priorities, next section in the memo. At the last Planning Commission meeting, which was March 5th, the Planning Commission provided information into what they individually thought were their priorities by writing those down on three note cards, and then those were collected at the group level to generate seven topics of interest, and those are listed in the memo. The West Falls Church Project, zoning updates, environment, affordability, walking and parking, regional context, and also getting work accomplished. That information is copied verbatim on the first attachment, so you'll see that titled "Planning Commission Notes" from 5 March 2018. Looks like this. It's a table with the leftmost column is the topics that were discussed, the brainstorming note cards copied, and then the third column to the right, and this relates to getting the work of the commission accomplished, those are boards and commissions that had indicated similar interests. When the council held their retreat in February, each of the boards and commissions submitted in preparation for that their top five priorities for the year. So, Ms. G did the work of culling through all of those responses and looking for overlap between what the Planning Commission was talking about and what these other boards and commissions were talking about. So, taking that as guidance, staff met, I think, early or the middle of last week, and we put together the second attachment, which you'll see has the green color coding on it. And so, what staff did was looked at those priorities that the Planning Commission had indicated, took a step back and thought about what we saw in terms of either active projects, ongoing projects, or projects likely to start in the near future. We also thought about our staffing levels and how long it takes to get some of these things through. In some cases, we also got to take advantage of all the good work that had already been done, and then we put those together into a staff draft, and we took it through the second quarter of calendar year 2019. The reason for doing that is so that it aligns with the fiscal year. It's often the case that some of these projects will carry on into that timeframe, and it's also the case that we're setting our budget now for work we're going to complete over the following 12 months. So, with that, I want to start engaging with the group in sort of a question-and-answer period about what you all think about this draft work plan. And again, the three questions are, you know, do we have the right categories? Do we have the right individual efforts? And do we have the right level of detail? And I think just to start the conversation, I want to have a little bit of time with people. Before we dive into the scheduling and the priorities, I want to take some amount of time first with the group just to make sure we have the right things on the sheet. Are there things that you wish were on the sheet that aren't? So, I want to first use this time to expand the list of things we're talking about.
Well, let me just say before we do that, this was one of the things that I talked to Paul about over the last couple of weeks, and I had brought this up at the last retreat, is trying to understand the calendar for the staff. We have... I have said specifically, and it has come up, that we have a lot on our plate as a city right now, and I thought it was important to understand those commitments we already have and where we can fit in these additional things. We had a big, long wish list that we came up with two weeks ago, and it's going to be hard, even if we are, you know, very passionate about them, to fit them in based on what we got, what we already have signed up, and the continuing development reviews that just come in that we can't anticipate at this point. So, I thought this gave us an overall, you know, view of what was on the schedule and for us to understand what is and what isn't realistic. An example here, as you'll see, is this Greenway Downs issue. We have talked about this for a long time. I know it was a priority. It's been a priority for a while for us to get things done, but being realistic about where we can fit it in, Paul and the staff have put it, you know, the meeting not even happening until the third quarter, and then you get to a second reading in the fourth quarter of 2018. So, it's trying to see the big picture about what we're trying to accomplish and what we possibly can accomplish, so...
So, the things that don't have any green on them, like the high school site plan or the residential parking or paper streets, those are things that we don't think we're going to be able to fit in this timeline?
Correct.
Okay.
So, there's... I mean, this was their best guess based on what they heard and what we spoke about, but if there's something that we think, wait, you know, Greenway Downs maybe isn't as important as we indicated, I'm not suggesting it is or isn't, but where we'd say, you know, let's focus on the residential parking instead, and just to have that discussion so that we could fit it in, we can have some impact on the schedule in some ways. The stuff under the current planning, maybe not so much, but it is to understand if there are blanks and that's not consistent with what we think. Here we go. Here we can have some impact.
Yeah. Related to that, I mean, one of the questions, of course, would be the level of effort. So, I think we all presume that, like, Greenway Downs overlay should be not much time because we've already figured it out a couple of times, whereas residential parking might take we've already figured it out a couple of times, whereas residential parking might take more effort because we haven't figured it out yet, but I'm probably wrong about that, but.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, before we even get to sort of workload, I want to invite the group to really focus on those first two columns, the topics and the work items. Are there things that are missing that weren't considered? So as staff started prioritizing, did we miss part of the conversation in the very beginning? So are there things that the group needs to see on the work plan or perhaps accounted for in future years that aren't even on the work plan yet?
Just add on parking. Lyndy and I attended the EDA retreat a couple of weeks ago, and that's one of their top five issues.
On the other side.
Right.
On the backside.
Yeah, so I just want to share that, you know, that's something, and they've gotten into it quite a bit of detail, so.
And that's something I'd like to touch base on maybe sometime this evening. It's getting to me to be a little frustrating in a couple of places that I will ask for information and, you know, on something that the EDA is doing, and then why weren't we notified of it? And then it was somebody else's request from the EDA, so we didn't, it was, it's getting kind of strange.
What is it specifically that's strange?
Specifically was the idea of hiring Walter Phillips to do the whole Broad Street plan, or to look at where everything is. And I think that's something we should know about also. And when I asked about it, they said, well, you didn't get the information because it was Bob Young's plan.
Hmm.
So, I mean, that to me is a little confusing. And that's, again, the separation of things that should be addressed co-ordinately. And that's happened on a couple of things.
And when you say know about it, you mean, I mean, you know about it, so what more do you know?
Yeah, we know about it, but do you?
I do.
You?
No, I didn't know about it.
But real quick, you guys are supposed to report back because I came up with the EDA.
I know, but we don't get the info.
You were at the EDA meeting, is that?
I know, but it's, it's.
I'm just curious what it is that we need to know ahead of time, like the whole EDA meeting?
And I didn't come back with kind of a detailed effort on that, because I looked at the Streetscape Committee that occurred a year or so ago, and I think Planning Commission had members that participated in that, that that was kind of the area that we had. What the EDA is interested in is kind of the nitty-gritty, you know, very detailed engineering, which park bench, you know, where to put a bike rack. I didn't think that that would be something that would be of keen interest to us, maybe just awareness, but I didn't see it breaking through any policy grounds. Basically, what they were trying to do is implement the Streetscape.
No, I agree with that. My only thing with the whole thing is, has there, you know, are they going ahead and doing another study that has already been done, you know, within the planning, you know, department and things, things like that?
We've seen a copy, I think, of the draft scope of work that Walter Phillips prepared, and it does seem to be adding on to information that the city doesn't already have. So it's building on the city's store of information by identifying issues that need to be addressed, whether it's utility poles, or approximate costs, or approximate, you know, lineal feet of sidewalk that need to be repaired or converted from concrete to brick.
I guess the question I have, and I know this is DDA's money, and they can do what they want with it, but, you know, I just wondered if a study, if this is the appropriate time for the study? Because if they come and have this study and they're going to say, hey, we need to do this, this, and this, but we don't have the funds for it, then the study sits there for a couple of years.
So before, I feel like the conversation's steering towards sort of critiquing ideas, and I want to make sure we're staying in the generating ideas before we start.
That's why I wanted to talk about it later.
What is hearing schedule?
Hearing schedule, where are you?
Last item under current planning on the work plan.
Sure. So, the current practice in the City of Falls Church is that there is not a predefined schedule or docketing system for applications. So it is the case in other jurisdictions that when an applicant pays a fee for an application, that they get either an actual or an approximate hearing date. And it can do with the complexity of the application, whether it's a special exception or a rezoning or a site plan or subdivision, whatever it is, they get an approximate or an actual hearing date that they're striving toward. The city doesn't have that system set up yet, and we're hearing some conversations from the investment community that that is a deterrent toward applying in the city.
So this thing, we could have someone come talk to us about that concept.
Correct. And so that, the idea is starting with a speaker series event to hear from what's going on in other jurisdictions, what are the practices that other people in the region are using?
This was the issue that Jim Snyder went on.
Yeah.
As you know.
Although, in Fairfax, they get a planning commission date, they don't get a board supervisor's date, which obviously is very different than the way the city's organized, because you don't go to the board until you're completely done with the PC. It's not like here where you go to the city council, then you go to the boards, and then you go back. There, you kind of work your way up, and the board is the final step. So they do get a PC date, which for a special exception, could be anywhere from, no quicker than six months, usually nine or 12 months out, and the board date is still a question mark. So it's different, but it's, I mean, the developers critique that, too.
Right, right, right. The problem is, I think, right now, it's sort of amorphous with the city.
Correct. And it's, this is, this is a city council that's very busy with the number of things they've got on their plate. So is this a conversation that could be had with the council in terms of, do we want everything going, how do we want to handle these applications? And is there a way to at least get these people started in the system?
Well, I think part of it, too, is it's, you discuss it with different developers, and they all have different opinions on it. Because some of them don't want to go forward and start having hearings unless they think they're going to do well. And so it's just this kind of weird, you'll get one developer going, I want to go now, and you'll have other developers going, no, I like the way you guys do it, because I am ready to move forward when we finally go, so, you know.
But overall, developers do like, they do like certainty, even if it's somewhat of a mirage on the horizon. They like certainty because it does give them some ability to try to plan, helps them to try to get financing or plan for financing and that type of thing. So there's something to be said for having a process where there's just within, as much as you can expect in a public process, some degree of certainty about, okay, this is about how long I should budget, you know, for this, and this is about what the timeframe is. I mean, Fairfax has been going through a multi-year, multimillion-dollar consultant-type project to try to improve the development review process. So, and they're struggling with it, too. I mean, and so developers, again, but I will say, one big theme is that certainty in general is good, but it usually comes with lots of caveats.
Yeah, certainly the idea of certainty where the city staff, as Jim Snyder and I are going to NAOP, which is a real estate industry group, and we're talking to their governance committee tomorrow about the benefits of the reorganization, bringing economic development aligned with the planning, zoning, and building safety shops, so that they have a better degree of certainty that when they start their application process, they know they're not going to get bounced around City Hall. Trying to get more of a sense of certainty about how long is it going to take from the time I start paying engineers and architects and lawyers, that I can actually start getting a return on my investment.
No, I think, I mean, it makes sense to try to come up with a better streamlined way of doing it, but we all know in the end, it's really going to count on what they're applying for.
Yes.
And what their project looks like. And the projects that take longer are usually the ones that are not aligned with our goals. And so that alignment between their project and what we want to try to get someplace, that's, so, you know, that's why I say it's kind of, it's kind of up to them to a certain extent about what they bring in, where our starting point is, so, but I get what you're saying, like, if some kind of vague certainty that you'll get a hearing in nine months, okay, if that helps, then I think certainly we should try to arrange that, but it really counts on what they give you guys, what that first submission looks like. Because, you know, if you get a really, I don't think we've ever gotten a really clean submission, usually the first time through, but I've ever, it's so many notes, and so that's what takes time.
Right, and founders row has just been hanging over your heads for ever.
I would favor us hearing a speaker on the topic.
Yeah, no, that, we will have this full conversation in the second quarter, it sounds like.
Yeah.
When is the high school site plan, this one's blank, when were you expecting it? Is it just outside this time horizon?
No, it's inside the time horizon. I was looking for information in haste, and so I think I found the high school information later. I believe they're planning to start construction in the middle of calendar year 2019, if I remember that correctly. And so they'd be coming through the site plan process certainly in the first quarter of 2019, if not sooner.
I wondered about that, too, and I thought, well.
But obviously, we will have to do whatever we have to do to prioritize.
The one thing I, if I read their construction schedule correctly, one of the things I was happy to see is that they're coming in at their site plan submission, I think at 60% design, which will save a lot of headaches that we normally get, which is the projects at 100% design, so anything the Planning Commission needs to see for approval, it's already included in the cost of the project versus, if you get 100% design, then you've got a back-and-forth about, well, this is going to cost us money. Ah, it should have come sooner. And so they're planning to do that, which I think is a good thing.
Good, good.
So that also means that when you see it at 60%, make sure you cut them a little bit of slack, because they may not have all the details on everything.
We'll try.
Oh, no, you should let them know what needs to be fixed, but understand that they're not done.
So Paul, let's, we have these two lists. We have the brainstorming one, the notes, and then we have your work plan. Just so I'm clear, what we're trying to, feedback we're trying to give you, are you asking that the topics, the seven topics that we have listed on this brainstorming, should they be incorporated in some way into this work plan? Or we should be switching out some of these topics in favor of the ones that we mentioned the other day?
So, what I'm suggesting is that the seven topics have already been accommodated into the work plan, as well as the brainstorming ideas that the Planning Commission had. So if there are things that are missing in that Planning Commission work plan that you all need to see reflected, now, some of these things became more generic, right? They didn't necessarily carry over by their name. For example, environment was a topic. The way that got captured in the work plan was with an update to the natural resources chapter of the comprehensive plan, that some of this was trying to group and put a typology around these things.
I have one thing. On the second page of the work plan, the two items at the top, the paper streets and the update of the M1B districts, I wondered if we should possibly do the paper streets and put off the other one? Because I believe that turning the paper streets into greenways and make it, you know, designated as parkland will be a much easier project. We could find ourselves bogged down on the other one. So I think, to me, the paper streets is a lower-hanging fruit that we could do easier. So just suddenly, I thought that we could flip those two. And then, not, I would like to do the update on the M1 in the business district.
Right, right, right.
But I'm just thinking that one I would put further out.
But it comes up so often.
Well, it does, but I just think that it's a very easy sale to say, hey, we have these paper streets, we're using them mostly as pathways anyway, we might as well make them parkland. I just don't think there's going to be as much pushback. There's only one person I think would push back, and that's because he's gardening part of our greenway, but, you know, other than that, we're in pretty good shape.
Is staff capacity going against holding up paper streets?
So the paper streets, the last time that was presented to council, they had requested additional outreach to the neighbors that live around the paper streets in terms of messaging what would be the impacts and benefits to their properties. I think when staff was looking at this, one of the benefits of updating the M1 and B district references is that it might make it easier for people to reinvest in the M districts. For example, there are large acreages of the city that are zoned M1, and they can't necessarily do the kinds of uses and features that are envisioned in the city's small-area plans and comprehensive plan. So this might be a fairly simple fix to a few sentences in the zoning ordinance that would allow the kind of reinvestment that are being talked about. So you could have an economic impact in the city out of the M1B district references. Paper streets is seen more as a way to clean up some of the references in the comp plan, that there are some blank spots on the map. It's where we draw on the sea monsters when the internet is down. So this would be an opportunity to color those in as green, make it clear that those are intended to be used as greenways and open spaces.
Yeah, and I could see why the M1 would come out more important from the staff perspective, and I'm fine if we leave it the way this is. I just felt like paper streets might be easier, you know, and a little bit quicker.
I think the M1.
Anytime you try to change the, you know, commercial property that doesn't, you could end up getting a lot of pushback.
The, well, I think we can find, my guess is that there are champions for the M1B district references in the, in terms of property owners. I think with paper streets, it would take a little bit of work to find a champion to bring that through.
I would think the ESC would help champion that, too, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pre-commission.
The paper streets, yeah.
Pre-commission.
Right. Open space.
Because right now, it's vague what could happen to them.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just annoying that it's still there.
Yeah.
The CACT and the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board on the paper streets issue did both submit letters of support for that future land use map change when it last went up to council.
Yeah. Well, at least we've got to keep it on the list, and if we can get it in there sometime, we should.
Does anybody see anything that they want to add to this work plan, based on what we talked about last meeting?
Boy, if we could make, you know, good progress or complete this list, I think we'd all be pretty happy.
Yeah, I agree. So I'm not hearing any call to add additional items to the work plan. It seems like people are generally satisfied with what's on there in terms of the content in those first two columns. Ms. Hockenberger?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to ask, the natural resources chapter update, is that where we're going to kind of talk to the up-in-the-environment requirements for lead? Like going up from silver to gold, and that, you feel like that will be something we'll discuss during that chapter?
Yeah, that could be talked about during the chapter. What I'm envisioning happens on those comprehensive chapter updates, both natural resources and housing, is that it would follow the mold of the most recent chapters. If you remember, the transportation chapter, Mobility for All Modes, and the parks chapter, the Parks for People, both of those had a similar format, that they were picture-heavy, they were very visionary and aspirational, and then they included a list of prioritized action items, short, medium, and long term. And so I think that one of the benefits of the comprehensive planning process is they're designed to be a safe space for conversation. It's like presenting a student report or an intern's summer research, that comp plan is an opportunity to talk about a lot of things, and then the things that people are most comfortable with or have the most advantage for the city, those end up in the short-term bucket. The things that maybe people weren't totally signed on for or would still need to be worked out, they end up in the long-term bucket.
Especially on something like, you know, energy codes for buildings, which we can't really do anything on a by-right basis, but we could certainly signal what we'd like to see in the, you know, comprehensive plan.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, the one that I am looking at that I'm just concerned about is the West End area, small area plan. We've already just had the developers come in for a big meeting for that area development. And I believe they're supposed to come in with, what is it, October 1st, that they're, what are the plans due?
We've actually got Lee Goldstein here in the room.
I saw him over there.
For commissioners that aren't familiar, Lee Goldstein is the, what's your, your project manager, your project manager for the West Falls Church Development. Lee comes with a lot of experience working in the District of Columbia on a range of projects and seeing that coordination between the public and private side to see projects that have a lot of benefit come to fruition. Lee, the schedule for the RFP process, do you want to come up to a mic and just talk about it briefly?
So the, right now, there's a request for concessional proposals that's out, and that will be due back May the 1st. At that point, there'll be an evaluation committee that will review, provide recommendations to city council. And then we hope to down-select respondents, maybe four to six respondents in June, and the request for detailed proposals will be issued in June.
Is there a date for that, or?
Not a set date yet, but I'm thinking probably mid-June. And then, that'll be due back in August, and from there, we hope to make a selection, a final selection in October.
But my question is, and I want your opinion of it, we've been in this position before, where development has come in and we didn't have the small area plan done. And it, to me, it seems like the cart before the horse. And since we can't slow that down, how is that going to affect what developers are going to come in with when we don't even have a small area plan?
I think I can speak to some of this, so.
You know, get some thoughts on it.
Sure. I think a couple of years ago, the city did engage with the Urban Land Institute and the Technical Assistance Panel.
Right.
The tap gave, I think, a pretty good sense of where the real estate development community was at that time. And I think what this RFP process is allowing is that the city is communicating through the RFP proposals or the requests. The city is communicating what it's interested in seeing in terms of land uses and mix of uses, and what will come back as a result of that RFP process is how close can the private side get to that? That I think you can have confidence that the city is communicating its priorities in those RFPs, and then what comes back from the private side is the closest that they can match to that with a level of certainty that the city's comfortable moving forward with. I think that's the advantage of this, is that you're opening yourself up to multiple people competing.
Right. Now, I can see that advantage, but what I see in that is more or less having the developers tell us what that area plan is going to be.
It might be worthwhile, I think, we can probably get the RFPs distributed to the Planning Commission, both the one that's already gone out, as well as the one that's going to go out in June.
I think that would probably be a good idea. I just see us writing the, getting the small area plan done after the developers come in with all their ideas, and that to me is writing the book after it's done, or after the.
And after zoning, too.
After zoning, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me, and I know there's nothing we can do time-wise, but. And I know there's nothing we can do time-wise, but because of where we are in place. And, but it just bothers me that this is, I'd say, the second time around that we've written the area plan after the development.
One of the things that is included in the scope for this West End small area plan is not just the campus area, because I think you're right, that a lot of that is being worked out through the campus coordinating committee, which the group has a rep on. This small area plan is intended to capture all of the planning opportunity areas west of the WNOD, which includes the area where the Giant Shopping Center is. It also includes the industrial areas in the Gordon Road Triangle and the city's property yard, as well as the campus area. And so I think this is an opportunity to build on what's already been done east of the WNOD. It's an opportunity to take what's planned in terms of what Womata is thinking, what's Fairfax County thinking, what has been agreed to through the RFP process, and to bring those things together. And that is an area that's exciting to plan because there are a relatively small number of large landholders. So I think, you know, the West Broad Street small area plan really got across the finish line when the property owners got engaged and started talking about what they saw as the vision for that section of the city. I think it'll be relatively easy in terms of property owner outreach for this larger effort, and I think it will be possible to come up with, I think, something that's very dynamic and forward-looking, but leaves a lot of opportunity for planning commission input and guidance because of the area being discussed.
I think it probably would be a very good idea for us to have a copy of the RFP, just for our knowledge, and if people ask us, hey, what are you looking for? I personally can say, gee whiz. Yes, online, I know, but-
Yeah, and there was a lot of discussion about, you know, what goes in that RFP with a lot of different stakeholders. And there was this fine line between being too prescriptive versus not.
Prescriptive, and I agree with that totally.
And I think that the RFP, having reviewed it extensively, finds a nice balance that is consistent with what you'd want to indicate for that area, that 10 acres, that would be in a small area plan. And then, as Mr. Stoddard said, we had talked about it, really expanding that area plan to include all the things west of the, west of the trail, and therefore, you can, well, you're not going to beat the schedule as it relates to this 10 acres. You'll sort of can combine some things and be ahead of it as we try to see that area develop.
I imagine that's going to spur on some redevelopment up there, and that's what we also need to be prepared for.
Yeah, so I thought this was a good work plan to try to do that. But you're right, that 10 acres will not be as well-defined through the small area plan process, but really through the RFP process.
Lose that, as you described it earlier, that safe space to kind of describe-
Correct, correct. But I think the, I think the small area planning process can get some of that back for the other. I think we had run some numbers on this a few years ago, that the West Falls Church project is 10 acres, but when you look at, when you add in the other two POAs, I think you're looking at a total of 60 acres. So there's still 50 acres that the planning commission is weighing in on.
One of the other things I mentioned at the last meeting that I think would be really good to see, have the planning commission see are the two publicity things. There was one that was just a couple pages glossy from the EDA, from the economic development, and then there's a much more extensive one that I think people should see, and, because they're very interesting and it's a darn good-looking product.
Included in the back of your packages is the short form.
Oh, there's the short form, yeah. But then the longer form is really great, even though some of the pictures are not a false church, but that's okay.
That's an issue that came up with the streetscape. Sometimes if you're trying to change a community, you need to get photos from outside.
And we've just gotten rid of our one revolving door in the city. And there's a picture of one.
The only thing I saw on this brainstorming that I'm not sure how it got incorporated is really this parking and walking. The only one I see is the residential parking update. And-
Hey, please, the traffic models.
Yeah, so the parking update, in part, was a pickup from, I think, there was conversation about parking updates as well as traffic models and the brainstorming cards, and that was also something we talked about. I think there seemed to be some positive reactions from the group in response to the TLC report from Fairfax County about updating parking standards.
And where was that? In the work plan? Where do I see those?
Oh, I'm sorry, where is it? In the zoning ordinance updates, bottom of the first page, the last work item listed is residential parking update.
Okay, and that, but that's blank.
But it's not in the work plan for the upcoming fiscal year, you're correct.
Yeah. Yeah, and I was just looking also at the back of this page, is it Planning Commission notes? And seeing that the committee with same goals would be EDA, of course, but I think CACT probably should be added to that.
Sure.
So you're saying that the traffic, residential parking updates includes most of what we talked about in number six, in walking and parking?
I think we would probably have to expand the work plan to include that item, because I hadn't been thinking that when I put it on the planning commission work plan itself. But if we wanted to get the TIA's in there as well, I think that would, it would be a related effort. I think that's one of the things that has been an issue with the city, that the city already has a non-SOV mode share for work trips, I think somewhere around 40%. And yet, when we, when we do traffic impact analyses, when we're talking with the consultants, they're very uncomfortable taking a credit of anything higher than 5 or 10%. And that's a real issue when you think about these new developments being more multimodal than the existing development, and somehow, we can't even take credit for what's already happening. So it might just be that they need a little bit of oomph, or comfort, or something, maybe from this body or another, to say, I want to know that the TIA is consistent with what we're already doing, if not better.
We had talked about, it had been brought up about the autonomous vehicles. Perhaps that could be a priority for the speaker series. I don't think there's time to be redesigning our parking as a result of this, but to understand so we can be more prepared when this, that we've begun thinking about it, just be informed. I think Mr. Rankin had talked about wanting to be a leader in this area, and if we're not informed on that, that's going to be hard to do.
Absolutely.
Though it had a big setback today.
Yeah.
Someone got killed by the first autonomous vehicle.
Right.
Maybe outside.
Autonomous vehicle being overseen by a human being.
That's right.
It didn't step in, so cars are dangerous.
And may I just have one other thing? Just in working with the EDA on all the walking and parking, they seem to be really, really already super-involved in it, so we need to really work together on that. You know, they're saying, yeah, go ahead, you know, they're planning on which side of the street they want to specifically work on, and that, and, you know, again, we haven't even discussed, you brought in the, of course, I've heard you talk about the street plan and everything so often, I don't know where, different places I've heard you talk about it.
Sure, we're talking about the expanded parking in the downtown area.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is also something that made its way onto the council work plan, which they're discussing in their second work session tonight. The city manager, Wyatt Shields, is leading that conversation while I'm here, that I think it's on the work plan for either spring of this year. I think that's what some groups were pushing for. Some folks were thinking summer, but I think either way, the message is soon to expand on-street parking in downtown, as well as to add some pedestrian pathways, that it's good to add parking, but you have to have a way to be able to get from the parking to the place you're going, and usually that means pedestrian connections.
With your overall great street plan.
Yes, it's seen as a first step towards the larger vision for Park Avenue Great Streets, that Park Avenue Great Streets, the group maybe remembers, includes a larger vision for all of Park Avenue, which is identified in the comp plan as one of the city's great streets. But the idea is more street trees, more brick sidewalks, more curb extensions, something that connects the street to the buildings and the uses around them, so that they work together much better. The idea of expanding parking and expanding pedestrian connectivity would be a way of doing that now, so that people can enjoy it while the engineering for the larger project continues. I think this is a tactic that a lot of communities are starting to use. They're realizing that it's frustrating to wait five, seven, 10 years for a project, that people want to enjoy it when they start talking about it. And so other communities are finding ways to implement things now. It's also an opportunity, not only to enjoy them, but also to test them out, so that they can be done right when they're actually poured in concrete.
For instance, the EDA was coming across very strong on the south side of the, of Park to put all the brick, to connect, because of everything else that's going on down there.
Yeah, the north side-
And we haven't really talked about it too much, yeah.
Yeah, the North Side Social, which is the rehabilitation of the historic structure there and turning it into a restaurant, when that goes in, that will include brick sidewalks at their expense. And so what you'll have, absent any other work by the city, is one corner of brick sidewalk that's done through private investment, and all the public investment is holed up in a longer-term engineering effort. And so can you release some of those public funds now to get brick sidewalks, at least on the south side of Park Avenue, where there are no utility poles in conflict? And it's an opportunity to connect all the investments that are happening, both public and private. You've got City Hall, the North Side Social, the Downtown Park.
The library.
The library. So is there an opportunity to make those connections now instead of waiting?
Thank you.
All right, Paul, where are we at here on your-
Well, so in terms of the-
These are all sort of, I feel like we're mixing these, all these draft work plan items.
Yes, and I don't have a problem with that at all. I think it's a good conversation that's happening. So I feel like I haven't heard anybody necessarily adding anything, except I think the TIA updates. So I think that takes us through subitem one there. Priorities, there was one question about whether paper streets and the M1B district should be flipped, and that was also related a little bit to scheduling. So are there other things, I guess in those questions two and three, where people are thinking about priorities for these things?
I'm not, but pick up, people have different priorities.
You know, I guess one thing I do ask about the parking update, you know, we had all those nice parking reports. And, and so you just hate for it not to be on here, because if we're waiting until the middle of '19 to come back and look at that, then it's like-
They're out of date.
Well, yeah, that's, it's just a sad thing, that we get information, then we aren't able to act on it, and then by the time we're ready to act on it, we have to start over again.
The ones from a couple of years ago?
Yeah, now they're starting to get old already, yes.
The one Susan Bell's, and I keep bringing that up.
Yeah.
And-
Well, they're probably, I guess they're already starting to get too old. But anyway.
And that was done mostly with the development.
Yeah. Well, I guess, I guess the thing about it is, it's probably not a super priority, because we're already making changes in these projects based on what we're seeing, anyway.
Most projects do come in with a parking reduction under what's described in the code. I think a lot of the projects are still finding a way to be successful. I think, right, one thing I mentioned earlier is that the TIA regulations are such that people tend to, people tend to like, they like to say, ah, I'm being conservative by picking a low number of non-SOV. That's actually being very aggressive, that you are saying, I know you're going to have a 40% non-SOV mode share, but I'm going to push you to do more than you think you need. That's actually being very aggressive. And the same thing holds, I think, for parking in single, I'm sorry, in residential development, that the city's parking ratios are much higher in the code than what Arlington would require. Not saying that the city is the same built environment as Arlington, but it is moving in some ways in that direction, not the Roslyn-Bosnian corridor, but in some of the other districts that have good transit access and good bus service. They're relatively close in, and people have other travel options. So the TDM packages are allowing people to get reductions. I think cleaning up the code would allow that conversation to start in a better place, that it's starting so far from where they're going to land, that there's a lot of messaging that goes into, no, they're not underparked, they're just bringing it into what's, what's more reasonable for the building.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about this, Paul and I, as well, and the outcome, as you're indicating, is sort of where we think it should be. They come in with a reduction plan, and we're pretty willing to, you know, take them at their word, saying, you have to actually park this, and you have to make it work financially if you're willing to take that kind of risk, and you can convince of us, convince us of that. The planning commission, by and large, has been really pretty open to that kind of discussion. So while I agree we should try to ultimately get this improvement, improve in our code, at this point, I haven't seen it be really an impediment to people getting what they need in terms of the-
Yeah, I think the worst case we have probably is, is the Spectrum building, because, I mean, they literally have a floor of retail parking not used, but, but I think that was kind of a cautionary tale.
And Pearson.
Well, it's really, I-
I mean, tax analysts.
I was going to say, Pearson's-
Tax analysts.
Yeah, tax analysts, there is. But, you know, sometimes when, at night, when it gets pretty busy with Pizza or Soho, a lot of spots do get used.
I wasn't involved with tax analyst. Did they come and ask for a bigger reduction? We said no, or they didn't make that request?
I don't, I don't think I was, I didn't do the special exception for that one, so I don't know.
I mean, I think they, I think they pretty much met code.
Yeah. I came in at site, yeah.
I mean, it was mainly an office user with some retail, first of all.
Right.
Ended up with restaurants and medical-
Restaurants, and then they had a lot of medical usage. And that's, yeah, go ahead.
My office used to be in that building, I don't know if this is just folklore, but we were always told that the owners, tax analysts, had designed the building to potentially put an additional story on top at some point, so they might have done the parking. I don't know what- I think maybe the parking garage that was constructed, they could do it, but originally, it was one project, Pearson and Tax Analyst for the purposes of the determination of the parking. But we calculated by the use types, which that was primarily an office building, and there was supposed to be some sharing. And it was our first SE, so the language on the sharing was very loose, to the point it was not a commitment, but, you know, sort of a handshake kind of thing. And so we haven't had to enforce that, and we really didn't have the ability to do it. But anyway, so, since then, we've been more formalizing that and the VCs capturing it, whereas that one sort of was our first one. Matter of fact, we hadn't used the shared parking until that project, and we used the MRR table to run the calculations for the first time, and it happened the last two weeks of the project, right before approval. And we were so scurrying, and we ended up using that, you know.
They've got a lot of extra space, they've got the lower level that's rarely used.
Well, that, and-
That was the first time we used the shared parking matrix out of the MRR ordinance and applied it to a project. And then we've been sort of allowing the developers to work off of that, and then make their own determinations.
And really, there's times where that shared parking has been needed.
Oh, yeah.
So it's too bad that it hasn't happened, because, you know, some nights with Creative Cauldron and Pizza or Soho being busy, there is no street parking, and-
Right.
Tax Analyst doesn't enforce parking, they do that?
I don't know if anyone's, I think that if, you may or may not, there's signages there saying they do enforce parking, that may be just enough.
I mean, I have a letter from the developer that got approved that says they would basically consider sharing. And we've talked to the owner of the office building before, and he was amenable to some extent.
Yeah.
So if it's a real issue, then there's a way to at least approach it, but there's not anything that, there's no hammer to go with it.
Are we going to talk about the delivery schedule, or is that separate?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that as we go here. I think that's, that's where we are, is sort of those items two and three, of sort of what's the schedule, and do people need to see, what do people think about when things are delivering? Would they like to see some things later, sooner? Some things flipped in the schedule? I think, as Russ said, there's flexibility on some of these things, especially the future planning or the zoning updates. The current planning is a little more set based on where the applicants are.
I had some comments on a couple.
Yeah.
On the Greenway Downs overlay, I reached out a couple of months ago, or probably six months ago now, when we considered that item in discussion. And we were trying to puzzle through, you know, what's the holdup on this? And in talking with several city council members, it really just kind of boiled down to, they just want to make sure that the community there is in favor of doing this. Outside of that, they seem to be very, from a policy perspective, very amenable to having this go forward. What I'm wondering is with that, and also the update of Chapter 5, the Environment section, if we formed kind of a subcommittee amongst planning commission members, kind of taking off what Fairfax County does, they have standing subcommittees, I believe, on their planning commission. I don't know if we'd want to have that, but maybe have a couple of ad hoc committees that would actually kind of help push this thing forward to kind of help get it done. So I'll throw that thought out as, as one way to make- So I'll throw that thought out as one way to make progress on these.
Are you looking for a conversation of the group?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll throw it out and just maybe if I once to.
I'm not against having a subcommittee, but how do you think that, will that really make it go much faster? Because I don't think the problem was on our side. I think our problem was getting on the council calendar.
And I don't think that the city manager wanted, wanted, saw the need in it.
Well, I guess the thought is you'd go talk to the city manager, you know, whoever's, you know, that's involved in this, and actually oversee it.
I like the idea of champions on the Planning Commission. I know last time Paper Streets went up, it was supported by the Planning Commission by resolution, but it wasn't sort of in-person supported. So when staff was doing the report, there was no physical body from the Planning Commission to represent that interest or desire. One of the things we've talked about, and it could be wrapped up in these kinds of ideas of championing things and bringing them forward, is resetting the council and the Planning Commission's meeting schedules. So both groups would continue meeting as many times as they are now and on the same nights that they are now, but the planning, the city council, instead of doing work session, meeting, work session, meeting throughout the month, would do work session, work session, meeting, meeting. And the first pair would be for land use items that go through the Planning Commission, and the second pair would be for administrative items or some such thing, or some such pairing. And the idea would be by synchronizing that with the Planning Commission's meeting schedule, it could be that a Planning Commission member could be there without having to skip one of our own meetings. So maybe I have that wrong. Maybe it's the second week of the month, the second and fourth, that they would hear land use items. So Planning Commission is meeting as usual on the first and third, and if there are champions that need to go to council, they could do that on the second and the fourth without disrupting the entire Planning Commission schedule.
We've never had that opportunity.
Right, and I think you all may remember in recent years, when Broad and Washington work sessions got, joint work sessions got scheduled, or Mason Road joint work sessions got scheduled, it was traumatic on the Planning Commission's schedule that suddenly these were turning into five and six-hour meetings in order to get to the Planning Commission's business.
I mean, Paul and I discussed this earlier in the year. I thought this made a lot of sense. It's not really, I mean, it doesn't impact our schedule, so that's really easy. I mean, that's probably the way it should be, where the Planning Commission dictates these things.
Want that also to get materials earlier? Like, won't that also help us? I think Jim once mentioned something that that's part of the reason why, you know, sometimes we'll receive an important set of materials, like on Friday night for a Monday meeting, it just seems, you know, there's just not enough time to go through it.
Some of this is also related to the hearing schedule idea, that can we not only send that notice to applicants about when they're going to be on the meetings, but can we notify our own groups and staff about when items are going to be on schedules? That, I think sometimes the agendas get set at, say, a mayor's meeting on a Wednesday that they're going to be on at the council next Monday, and then the decision is, well, this has to go to the Planning Commission the following. Well, that's, you get out of the meeting late Monday night, you're using Tuesday to coordinate, and then Wednesday at noon, your materials are due, and you can see how this is a schedule that is ripe for failure.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think, I think this would certainly support that, that idea of making this more regimented, knowing what are we hitting this month, what are we hitting next month? And people would have a sense of what materials to produce and which ones to prioritize.
I'd love, I don't know, this may be a different discussion, but I'd love there to be like a cutoff for materials, so we could have, we could have, I don't know if it's a language or policy, we need to have something like so many days in advance, have enough time to review it. And not just us, the public as well.
And staff, yeah.
And staff, everybody. I mean, to have something like, I mean, you could pick whatever it is, five days a week, I mean, whatever it needs to be, but just some minimum where those materials aren't in, then, you know, we're not reviewing them unless there's some extraordinary circumstance. But otherwise, it just makes it so difficult to go through, especially a complicated rezoning or special exception with a stack of plans and proffer or voluntary commitments or, and, you know, it just takes time. And I, again, Friday night to Monday just seems unacceptable to me to do business that way.
I'd like to hear more from staff on that and from Deborah also, how, you know, she would like, it's because things get really compressed.
So before we do that, I-
I know, I'm just saying that.
This is a separate conversation, which I think is important, and I actually agree with you. But in terms of the schedule with the city council, what it does offer, if they are willing to do it, because it's somewhat unusual, they'd go work session, work session, meeting, meeting, then that would lend itself to this champion issue. And then that would mean whether it's a subcommittee or whether just a single person who says, "This is an issue that's important to me, I would like to represent-"
Facilitates that interaction between us and-
I would like to represent the commission, and we sort of authorize, this is our view of things. You may go speak on this issue.
Might help staff.
Yeah, I think the impact is identifying those champions. I think subcommittees, you may run into issues with additional sets of meeting minutes and meeting notes and publishing. So I think, I think the champions can be designated here at the open public meetings, and it's not unusual for one Planning Commissioner to reach out to staff. So I don't think it would be a change in behavior, and all the public decisions would still be held openly. So I think it would be fair for the group to identify champions with the understanding that you may make a couple of phone calls to staff and you may represent the group at the council meetings.
So if we, if they make the change, then it's easier. If they don't, then it would just be making, reaching out to the city council, you know, sort of on your own time and saying, "This is important to me." But I think maybe we could try it on an issue or two as it comes up and say, "This is an issue," for example, an environmental issue, which we know who our champion would be on that.
No, the meeting.
Andy, no. And say, "This is really important to me, and I want to push this forward," and then we take it as we're starting this, as opposed to saying, "On each issue, we need to assign a champion." Just saying, "These are key ones that come up, and we would like, someone would say, 'This is important to me.'" See how it works, as opposed to making it more like, much more formal than that?
No, I could see that coming up in, you know, early work sessions, when the Planning Commission is reviewing materials, that we may say, "You know, this is, this is probably someone that needs to guide this through, either because it's stuck politically or because it's a new item that we know to be important."
Or just facilitate communications.
Yep, yeah. This is a pretty accessible city council. I mean, just the way, I seem to bump into them almost daily.
When we, at one point, we talked about even for like developer projects, like each project would have one commissioner who was sort of the liaison to the developer and city guy, you know, the whole thing, so.
Yeah, we've talked about that in the past. We've also talked about having designated cycles in the months between council and Planning Commission for land use items. So that's another thing we can discuss later.
And we've actually done it before. Like, for a while, we'll do really well assigning people to it, and they're the one who does the motion as well and just keeps the project moving. But then we kind of, then things get complicated or projects get held up, and so it just, you know.
Go into limbo.
To connect, well, Mr. Fuller and Mr. Krasner were talking about the idea of getting the package materials in advance and also setting the cycles so that different kinds of applications were being heard by the Planning Commission at different meetings. We're going to get into this later in the evening, but there are some applications, subdivisions in site plan, where Planning Commission has final authority for approval versus others where the group is making recommendations back up to council or some other body. If those are scheduled smartly, then there is an opportunity to set the agenda two weeks in advance or more. So, you know, even if the final reports don't have sign off, we can be communicating what's on the agenda, we can get the materials that we do have, and perhaps we could ultimately work toward an earlier distribution for some of those things.
So in terms of having a champion, does that sound like an okay plan? We just do it on a, you know, as needed basis and to start with? Okay. So let's, let's make sure that's a question or just sort of on us that says, as we discuss an issue, someone say, "This is important," and if no, if no one wants to be a champion, I think that's okay. But I don't want to get off this, Mr. Krasner's comment, I think, I wanted to move, we were on one topic, but I do want to hear from staff about what you think a reasonable cutoff is and what the impact would be, because I could not agree more that this is a really hard way to review it and process it, and I think it's just, I think it's just unfair to all involved, but so where that cutoff is, is it five days, is it seven days, is, you know, how should this work? Because that really impacts my ability to review things and ask questions and think about it critically and hear from people if they have questions, you know, outside of this, this formal meeting spit, space.
So I've been hogging a lot of the mic time on this side of the table, but maybe the folks who are more involved, I think, especially in those complicated development review cases, Carly, Akita, Gary, what are your thoughts about what, what would it, I guess we'll have this conversation from two sides in terms of what the Planning Commission is looking for in terms of getting the materials. If Friday's too late, you know, we're walking back to Thursday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Monday, but also thinking not necessarily about what it, would it work today, but thinking about what's possible or what simple fixes could be set in place to get at least some of the materials, if not all the materials, out sooner.
I guess my, just to, I mean, maybe take us back, like, first of all, I don't even know if I'm clear on what your process is now. I mean, what is the process right now? When, you know, normally when there's a, you know, there's a hearing that's scheduled, and we know that in theory, there's, you know, I know we don't do it initially, but at some point, the developer knows, "Okay, I have a public hearing at the Planning Commission on this date." Do you guys tell them, "I need a resubmission?" So I then, because obviously, I know you do your own review, the other city agencies and professionals that provide comments, but is there a cutoff date for that internally, even before, you know, leading up to a hearing? Don't you guys have some type of schedule? I just don't even know what that is.
Akita, you want to talk about like Broad and Washington, how you set up date for them, for example? You know, you know, generally.
Yeah, we do, I think in the beginning, when an application is submitted, we do come up with a schedule, with tentative dates for them, telling them, "This is the date you want to submit to meet this public meeting, and this is the date you want to submit for staff review to happen on time." We can't always get them to stick to the dates. For example, just the latest with Broad and Washington, they've missed their deadline for submission to make the April 9th city council public meeting, for example, by about two weeks now. And so we're having to, you know, talk with them in terms of submission, and we're going to have to now work towards that April 9th, even though we have a delayed submission. So we do run into those issues, even though we do sort of map out the schedule and set the public meeting dates, things do shift.
Shouldn't they then lose their date? If they miss the deadline, then they lose their date and they get deferred out until-
Yeah, I think we're motivated.
Otherwise, that's a big carrot and stick kind of thing. I mean, if they, they really want to get the thing, get the ball rolling, you give them a deadline, and if they miss it, all right, they're going to May. If you miss it again, you're going to June. I mean, and it's on them to get it into, as long as you're clear upfront about when the materials need to be in. I mean, it's always going to be the occasional extenuating circumstance, but-
Or at least they're at risk of losing that date.
Right, and that's just how it should be. I mean, you know, that way, if they miss it, then, you know, because otherwise, again, we're not given the requisite time. You're not given the requisite time, we're not, the public's not.
But I just don't like the last-minute rush that some of you have to go through and Deborah has to go through. And I think it might, Deborah, you want to speak to it?
If I may, the city clerk recently put out a memorandum saying that all documents for the city council package on Monday meeting had to be posted on Wednesday by noon. And those who needed to sign off on the documents had to do it by 3:00 on Thursday PM. And then, and that's a realistic amount of time, but then there was only 30 minutes for planning staff or any other staff member to get the copies made and to the city clerk. Particularly right now, you know, we're in the 400 South, North Washington Street building, and we have, I don't know how many people on the floor now, and there'll be more people coming in. There's only one copier, so you can't meet a deadline that way.
Is having things online making that a little easier?
Well, we have to make hard copies for council packages.
Okay.
But then if we're busy with that, then Planning Commission package takes a backseat.
So, I mean, to get back to, I guess, the issues you were talking about, it's really two things. I mean, we're, we're giving them stuff in writing saying, "We need it by X date to meet this date." What happens is we bookend at first and second reading, so we're at second reading, and it can be, you know, the action could be a continuance, you know, an action on it, one way or the other. And what we're finding is, you know, there's a crunch at the end, and, you know, we find ourselves having to try and accommodate it. So it's really that, that bookend on the back end, that second reading, that we try as hard as we can and set all the deadlines, and then they're not meeting it, and then we're struggling to deal with it, so. And then the other piece is if there's a quick turnaround on that, where, you know, they have a work session at council level, or the Planning Commission's making a recommendation, and all of a sudden, it's on this tight schedule, all of a sudden, we're turning it, you know, we have a meeting with you guys, and then we're turning it the next day to package it for Wednesday, for Monday night Planning Commission meeting, Tuesday, trying, and if it's got any issues at all, it's like near impossible. And then we're repackaging it for that Wednesday, for that Monday meeting. And so that's the other piece that's really a killer for us when we get in those. But it usually, it's just, it's just a downhill snowball at that point that just gets so big, and everybody still wants to hold that date, and so we struggle.
That's why I think you have to sometimes just draw the line and say, "Listen, they're not going to, the developer's not going to make the date. If he doesn't provide it, get the materials in, it's on the applicant. The onus is really on them, as long as the rules of the game are clear. If you don't meet it, you don't meet it."
I think if we organized where, you know, the council meetings and Planning Commission meetings, not necessarily so much, but planning council, if they had a land use designated of their two meetings a month, and we could target that, and that way, you know, there's a month in between, there's a cycle, there's plenty of lead time, everybody knows, you know, what's going on. You know, we've talked about that before, but every time we try and implement it, it just sort of goes by the wayside.
Our workload is getting bigger, isn't it?
Well, I mean, with the high school project, you know, coming up in, you know, in 19-
And I mean by our, yours.
It's going to be, well, I mean, yeah, yeah, we have several large projects and a lot of medium and small. So we're constantly busy, but when you got the high school 10-acre coming online, you know, that's going to be all hands, you know, and do we turn other stuff away?
I mean, my recommendation would be that we, as the Planning Commission, in concert with you as staff, come up with a policy for meeting package deadlines that is very firm. And, you know, I don't know what that means for council, that's why we need to look to you for that. But I mean, I think we need to have a policy that's, that's fair and reasonable, and then well-advertised, and then just stick to it and see, I mean, I think, because right now it's just-
Look, I, just, I'll speak for myself as the, as the chairperson for a few more months. If the applicant does not meet those deadlines, I am more than willing to push it to the following meeting. Our schedule's a little easier than the council's for sure, but I could not agree more. It's just, as long as it's laid out, we got a busy agenda for lots of different things, and it's on them. And I, but, so me, personally, what's the, what's the guidance? Is it a week before? Is it 10 days before so that you guys have the time to pull it together? I think it's an important step, especially as we're going, looking at this schedule for the next, you know, six quarters that you've laid out here, to set that deadline and give us the time to review, and, you know, the public as well.
Well, I've worked in a few other places, and the main difference I've noticed here is the sheer number of meetings. Everywhere I worked, it's been council or board of supervisors meet twice a month, Planning Commission meets once a month. There are no work sessions, unless it's a budget item or something. And then the agenda items are due, like, for a Monday night meeting, the Friday, two Fridays before. So like a full week before is when staff post their agenda item, and so there's a full week in between. It usually gets wrapped up that following Tuesday or Wednesday, so there's a few days, you know, between it being submitted and then the meeting happen. So I think just having a number of meetings sets it up.
But if they require, so, well, we're going to meet twice a month, but I agree, we have so many meetings. If we set it up for Friday, that they need to have whatever they need to have in to you by Friday, prior to us meeting on the following Monday, that seems like a reasonable amount of time and deadline. Close of business Friday? So, I mean, the week, because we only meet twice a week.
Package to go out? I mean, the package, right?
Yeah, that's for our, the, like, staff report or whatnot would be the, now our, when we would want information from them would be, however we send back, whatever we needed to review, four weeks or whatever.
Is that reasonable, or you think Monday?
I think a week should be the, I think a week should be the minimum. I think one week out should be the minimum that, for the package to be published, so to speak, you know.
Internal.
Right.
Are you talking about internal or distributed to you all?
No, I mean, distributed to, to the, to the public and us, one week out, I think has, I mean, that seems.
Posted online.
Posted online, given to us, yeah, exactly right. Published for the world a week out.
I think, I think we can probably take that as a goal and sort of work back from that in terms of what would a joint schedule with the, with the council and the, and the planning commission look like based on that. Because I think one of the things that Ms. Aubrey did raise is, is the number of meetings, that there are four council meetings a month, there are two planning commission meeting a month, as well as, you know, these other groups that we went over, the AAB, Arts and Humanities Council, CACT, the, the same planning staff that you see here at the table serves as the primary liaison for many of these other groups as well. So we're a group that, that feels like we're constantly in package prep mode. I think reorganizing the schedule will help a lot. I think sometimes the deadlines to the developers would probably depend on the, the complexity of the case. So if it's a subdivision and all the issues have been met, that's a relatively simple package to review. If it is a update to the Mason Rose submittal, and it's four and a half acres of redevelopment, that's a more complicated.
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem making different rules as far as when they need to have their stuff in, but I agree with Mr. Krasner that we would need a week and the public. And if we're sort of trying to arrange this with city council, there, that, that seems to always be their mantra is the public, the public, the public, which I understand. The public needs a week. So if they, if, if it's a very complicated four acre, then maybe they need to get it in a month before.
Right, start with a week and then back out from there.
Yeah, but, but, but I think we should have a policy that says it's, it's in our hands and the public's hands.
Yeah, I think what would help with this, I'm thinking about this in my head, so other people should stop me if I'm too far off base, but the idea of segmenting the planning commission's work, because what we're walking ourselves into is that you can't talk about one item at a meeting and then expect an update at the subsequent meeting, that it simply isn't, that in terms of the calendar, it wouldn't work to talk about an item at one meeting and then get an updated package with a week's advance notice for the subsequent meeting. So you'd be, you could defer an item, but you'd always be deferring an item for at least a month.
No. Yeah. Paul, I just was hearing you say that planning commission has two meetings a month?
They currently have two meetings a month.
We've got work sessions usually in between times, don't we?
No, no, we usually do them after.
Sometimes around budget season.
I mean, during CIP is there, really, our only time we would say.
But if we, if that is the case, and if we look at that, there's no reason why we somehow can't pull the championship in with that, with that pattern.
We're not, I mean, if we were the only stakeholders they had to answer to, this would be easy. But it's, what I'm hearing is they have the same issue that's got to go before council and these other issues.
Right, but, but, that not to have the meetings, you know, our meetings are different, but it doesn't seem like we ever have the free Monday to go to a city council meeting. I was just saying.
We do, you can go out in the off weeks.
Oh, I do, sometime, you know I do.
Right, if, if you guys are meeting on the first and thirds, then the champions would get enacted on the second and the fourth.
That's what I said, that's what I wanted to say. Okay.
I think we're in agreement, but the council has to adjust the way they handle land use topics.
Okay, so that works that, that works that little deal out. But it seems like we throw in work sessions.
I can champion this, if you'd like.
Well, one of the things I'm wondering, if we are going to hear, you know, council work session, and then we're going to turn right around to a planning commission meeting, is it possible to simply send the same package that goes to council to the planning commission? In a sense, if the staff report, can the staff report be robust enough that the only thing that has to change for the planning commission is a different box on the first page?
It usually is. You mean from like first reading to planning commission referral?
I'm thinking from sort of, if it's a council work session on week one, and then we've got a planning commission meeting on week two, and then a council meeting on week three, can we use the same staff report for all three?
I think we have tried to do that. If we knew the meetings were close like that, we'll try to get them in that same staff report format to keep going.
Usually there's issues.
Misery in others, it's going to be decisional, so that you have to make that distinction.
Well, I think what would change would be sort of, right, the groups mentioned in the title box, the, the motion language may be a little bit different, but if the substance of the report isn't changing, we might be in a good position.
I, I, I think in the case of referrals where it's a first reading and we're referring out to the planning commission, that usually we're scheduling a work session, that tends to carry. But I think later on, when the plan's changed, and, you know, you're getting reoriented, and new issues are popping up, then it's, you can't do that anymore, so. But I, I, I think if it's a referral, I think that's possible, but I think all the other times you're having meetings with different bodies and there's discussion, there's additional issues, and you, you know, those need to be incorporated into it, so. Sometimes they're minor enough that you can do it, but we're talking about the complicated rezoning SC combos.
I, I'm not sure if we have a resolution other than our, a request to say, we'd like a week to review it, and if we can work with council to make that easier on you, or simplify the reports that you, our format looks the same as their format, and there's a new cover page that has motions and, you know, our names on it if necessary, that's fine. But I think the request is a reasonable one that applicants should be able to adhere to, so. And I'm happy to talk to the, the mayor or its other city council members about their schedule. So that's.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, this, this is a, a good first test of the champion system, so maybe for the next meeting, we'll do a little bit of thought on the staff side about sort of what this adjusted meeting schedule would look like, bring that to you along with some thoughts about when the package materials would be getting out to the planning commission, so that it's clear sort of what you all are benefiting out of this, but also what you're signing up for.
And if we can make it work, again, I appreciate we're not the only stakeholders, I'll repeat it, if they don't meet deadlines that we, we establish as the planning commission as its own entity, I am more than willing to push them off the agenda and to the next meeting. That is, I think, a fair response to not making your submission available in time.
A slight tangent on that, I, I have found we get an item, a packet, we talk about, have a meeting, that comes back weeks or months later, and we get an updated packet, and it is almost impossible to know what's changed sometimes, and so it's like, gosh, I feel like I've read this before. Is there a way to improve like that kind of aspect, like how we can see what is actually different from last time? Because sometimes they're real big, and you're like.
Summary of changes.
They can give you a red line.
Yeah, sometimes they're summary, but sometimes they're sprinkled in, and I, I always feel like, gosh, this seems inefficient, because I don't, it's not, it's fine to get it again, because it refreshed my memory, but I'll read a few pages, and I'll be like, I've read this before. I don't know, I don't know what the process is on your side, you know, and I don't, I don't know if there's some easy solution, but there are times I have noticed, and I can try to highlight them as they occur, as real, real world examples going forward, but that, that I've found that to be inefficient at times.
The, it sounds like, I assume what you're asking about is the substantive items in the, in the application, or the, or the going forward that, that, that has been updated, whether there's a major change in the schedule, or the, the, you know, the program in the building has changed.
Yeah, and honestly, even stuff like, okay, here, this is the second time we're looking at something, I'm going through the packet that just got sent to me, you know, the last 12 attachments are like emails from the public, wait, these are the same emails from last time, I already read, I'm like, is there a way to indicate that this was in a previous packet? So if you read the previous packet, you don't have to, you know what I mean?
I mean, I mean, in terms of how we do that is, is we don't repeat them at all. So in other words, if, once they come in, we put them in that package, we don't carry them forward at all. Except for maybe the council, if, you know, if it's a different body. Next time you get it, none of those are ever included anymore. It's only the new ones since the last meeting you had.
It was the same message from the same people.
Yeah, I mean.
Guess you can't stop.
Pretty good about that, you know, we don't carry them forward.
Well, I'll keep an eye on it, it's just, if I see stuff, I'll try to bring it, I realize it's hard done.
Well, if we're doing elect, you know, more and more, we're trying to do these electronic packages, if it's included in the, you know, track changes or whatever, just since it's an electronic document, we've gotten a bunch of Word documents, they're not all PDFs, we can handle that and say.
Yeah, sometimes it's pretty, well, that's why I say I should just, I should just bring it up in real time, because some of them have been fine. I just remember over the past couple of years, there's been sometimes when I'm like, gosh, a lot of this, I don't know where the new stuff is and where the old stuff is, and I end up kind of slogging through it, and, you know, sometimes it's good, because it refreshes my memory, but sometimes it just seems like super inefficient. But I do like getting my electronic packets.
How is that working out? I know this is, we're now way off topic here, but these are things that improve this process, and I, and so I don't really mind that this is not on one of our agenda. How are those electronic product, uh, packages working for everybody? We had some issues with some links a couple of times, but just by and large, how's that working?
Fine, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm probably the only, I'm probably the only one with any problems.
It's okay, I, I still think that, I don't know, it's funny, because I'm, I probably should be the most tech savvy, right? I'm like the youngest person on this commission, but it's, I feel, sometimes I feel like, I, I still like a hard copy, there are times where I still like it. I know like now with the move, that I was informed it's harder to make copies now, but at least have some agendas or some things printed out or some, I agree the big sets I don't need, but.
I will admit I like getting a printed agenda on the thing we get here.
Right, I like at least have an agenda printed out, or have some, some things here.
But I don't need it delivered to my house.
I mean, I don't have a tablet, and I haven't brought, I don't really have any of my own personal laptop to bring, so I haven't been, you know, a lot of times I find I'm looking at my phone to like, look at the attachments, I forgot, I forgot to print myself. So if we're going to go all electronic, I know one time we had talked about getting like, the city to, I don't know if the city would be willing to.
Yeah, they, they gave us a budget, so if, I mean, I actually was thinking about this recently, and I forgot what the number was, I want to say $600 or something like that.
Billion dollar.
That, that you'll just, if you purchase it, it'll be reimbursed, and I believe that's still available for.
We were looking at a, a program where I think doing either a stipend, or a, or a purchase of a piece of equipment, or a reimbursement, but something that recognizes the fact that it's not free to print these packages, that as we're hearing, there's a cost, so we're already giving you all a, a substantial amount of resources, they all seem to be coming in the form of paper. We could give them in other forms as well, like tablets and laptops.
I thought we had addressed this in January of last year. This was like one of the very first things.
We did talk about it.
I don't know that anybody has taken it up, up on the program, but I thought it made a lot of sense.
And then I'm usually the one that says, well, I don't have a laptop, I've only got the.
Well, I want to just point out.
Don't laugh at me.
We're not laughing, I just want to point out.
He's making faces.
I, I didn't want to bring my laptop, because I just didn't feel like it. So I've been bringing an Amazon Fire tablet, and I've been able to see everything on the Amazon Fire.
Like 50 cents, right?
I think the one I have was, it was a good one at the time, but it was like $250. I, I mean, it's probably $199 now.
So, so I think this, I think this program is, is in place.
You don't need a full laptop to look at this.
Right, well, I, I, yeah, whatever it is, I mean, I don't, actually, I don't have a laptop to bring, so I mean, if I, I.
This is a work one, I mean, I bring it, but it's not ideal. I'd prefer a tablet that, that I can work with. But, but that's my own issue. If the distribution stuff is working well, then we can talk about the hardware, and I think there is money in place, or a, a policy that says, we can bring it up, that says we'll reimburse up to some, the city will reimburse up to some, I thought we thought it was a pretty reasonable amount, plus the accessories or whatever it was.
Yes, we should, yeah, I mean, I remember talking about it, I, I thought we were going to check to see if it was going to be approved, and I never heard.
I think it, I think it was a thumbs up. That was like your first week.
Yeah, yeah, I don't recall, I just never recall like what happened as far as if you got to go ahead.
As Jim was really hurrah on it, and then we didn't hear anything more about it.
So if we did, so we could purchase it and get reimbursed?
I'm, I'm pretty certain, I think we'll check it, I guess, but I, it was like one of the first things we talked about. I would say it was February, January or February of last year, that he, that he said, yes, we're good.
Okay, and what was the, what was the budget for that again?
I, I want to say 600 is my recollection, but we talked about accessories and keyboards, all of it would be $600 and.
Okay.
And then we would own it, because they didn't want to have it work with IT, that was going to add a level of complexity that was too complex. So it was our own responsibility, but it was in consideration for the fact that the paper's not free, that this, if we're going to electronic, we should be.
All right, well, if you can just confirm that 100%, I will.
Yeah, I'll bring that information back to the next meeting, please. Because I think I'm probably taking available, make a, make a available.
It would take 20% entry.
Uh, so do I.
If we're done with item two, I might recommend, just to refresh the group, we take a five-minute recess, step outside if you need to, there's a few pieces of pizza left, and then when we come back, we'll, we'll knock out the speaker series and get into our last item.
I think we are done with two. Are there other areas, since this is just wasn't even on the agenda, where we think it'll make the meetings more efficient, think along this, this vein, since I don't think there's another place for us to address it? I mean, I know we brought up electronic packets, the issue of timing, these are things that had come up to me in the past.
How are the meeting minutes going? How we feel about those? I always think since it's recorded, it seems.
Well, I think they've been streamlined, so I think that they've been working really well. They're a little bit, they used to be longer.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, having seen the.
I've always favored them streamlining them down to a link to the video.
They can be summaries, they don't have to be repetitive transcripts, right? Yeah, they can just be summaries, we just cut it there.
I'm okay with them being shorter than longer. The meetings are available and recorded and accessible to anybody who cares, and you can click on an agenda item on Granicus and see that section of the video. So anything that simplifies that, I am okay, I don't know if there's rules and regulations about it, but if it's two, three pages, I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, I think the requirements, there are a couple of requirements that pop up for meeting minutes. One of them is that you have to record by Virginia Open Meeting laws, when the meeting started, when it stopped, who was present, what items were discussed, and what actions were taken, if any. Generally, in terms of defending your decisions, if it gets challenged in court, you want a summary of the issues that were discussed, along with any actions that were taken, so that if somebody asks, did the planning commission consider this? Well, you open up the minutes, and it says, ah, the planning commission considered, and then you're covered.
Well, if it flags that we considered it, fine, but if there's an issue, I would go to the video, I mean, right, let's roll the videotape.
Yeah, I know.
Video official?
They have a much nicer.
Is the video official for the open meeting law? That, uh, gosh, I haven't answered that question.
It still requires to keep minutes.
Did you have to have minutes?
I think it still requires that you keep written documentation.
I should have a written document of the votes and everything.
Accessibility.
I think it's still required that, I mean, I mean, unless they've updated something recently, but it's, I mean, it's probably, you know, it's an old law, but I think it still requires it's written.
I think as long as you record the votes and any, like, major decisions made, you're fine, and it's up to you how much detail beyond that, really. At least that's what I remember in that class we took so long ago.
But a record is important, but it's got a court.
And I will ask just that question.
Good.
So if we can simplify this, great, let's simplify it. I, I, you know, it's.
I bet Debra wouldn't mind that.
I, I, I think she wouldn't mind, but sometimes simplifying requires a lot more work than just verbatim, you know.
What does the council do? Do they take minutes, or what do they do?
They summarize, for the most part, I think.
Mm-hmm. We don't need to do more than they're doing, what do they, what do they do?
They, they have, the city clerk prepares minutes, but it's not presented at the next meeting.
It's a meeting afterwards.
The, the city council has that legislative update, which I always find sufficient, it basically shows all items that were voted on, so when the meeting started, when it ended, and I always feel like if I really want to know what they talked about, I jump over to the video. That thing is like, I guess that probably doesn't count as the minutes, but it's like bare bones.
Let's look into it, let's make it simpler. I mean, I, really, it's, if it's taking staff resources, that's not a good idea, just make this more efficient. Let's make this more efficient. We've, know what we have to note, and then, you know, go to the, go to the Granicus. That's why we got it.
And I think, previously when we talked about this, we said that we could bring two or three large copies of the site plan or the SE plan, so that you could look at details.
When we're here, yeah. That doesn't hurt, I think.
I, I agree. I don't, I don't wanna set personally, but if, I want it online, so I can look at it, and I've, you know, I got a touchscreen, I can scroll around and stuff like that. But I do think, I don't even know if three is required.
Yeah, one would be.
Just so we can look at it. There are some people who want the hard copy, I appreciate that, but let's use the least amount of paper as, as reasonably possible. Let's make, let's make this simpler, not harder. And I don't even, it's just wasteful, even if the applicant is paying for it. It's not, it's just wasteful. I mean, I, I don't know how many sets of plans you guys look at, and we get a roll of, you know, it's super thick, are you looking at?
My kids love to color on.
I know.
Okay, so I think we can take the break, and that, yep, that deals with, you know, streamlining meetings and things like that.
Yeah, I, I recommend a, a five or ten-minute break, depending on what the group needs, to stretch their legs, grab a drink of water, and then when we come back, we'll, we'll knock out the next two items.
Let's split the difference and come back at ten after. All right, let's go.
He's got the copy of the twenty seventeen, and it has the complete small area plan, rezoning, winter of seventeen and eighteen.
Okay, I think she's moved on now, now there's a new guy. Well, she's not the chair anymore, maybe she's.
All right, we are going to reconvene our advance, and let me turn it back over to Mr. Stoddard.
Sure, just one question to close out the discussion of, of meetings and making them more efficient. It is in a lot of literature about running meetings, managing meetings, seeing people participate in meetings, that after an hour or two, people's focus and energy really tends to wane, and so that was, I was happy to see the group take a break tonight. And I think that's a, a discussion question, I think, for the group about future meeting. Once we, once we hit that hour and a half, two-hour mark, if not sooner, is it time for someone to raise their hand and say, "Wait a second, I'm not sure we're being productive anymore, let's pause for five minutes and come back."
That could be dangerous.
Usually during that two hours, it's during public comments.
I mean, do, do we wanna, as a policy, where I would say, okay, between items, not every item, but at some point in the midpoint, say, "All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break, so people can use the restroom"? I mean, right now, people just dart off into the back, and it happens pretty seamlessly, but just in terms of just getting up, stretching, five minutes, does that sound like a good idea, or we just wanna keep moving through? It's not something that's.
I think if it's a long night, it's good to take a, take a little break, sure.
I like, I will say, this is pretty impressive, this one only came back three minutes later than you thought, than you said. I mean, in my experience, five-minute breaks is usually a fifteen-minute break, so if we can actually do a seven-minute break in ten minutes, thumbs up. If it ends up being like a fifteen-minute, twenty-minute break.
No, I would set a time, I'm gonna say.
You say a time today, we came back three minutes later.
I was sitting here.
I'm not criticizing you, I'm just saying, this was actually, this was probably one of the better.
Bathroom break was headed off in line.
I'm just saying like, this is a better break than most, but they always take longer than anything, so I think a seven-minute break that takes ten minutes is awesome.
All right, well, let's try it out, and if, if everybody can be respectful of the time, it'll be somewhere between five and ten minutes, depending on.
Longevity.
What the meeting agenda looks like, so let's try that out.
All right, so jumping into item number three, the speaker series. In your packages, there is a memo titled Speaker Series, looks like this. There are three sections in it, introduction, previous speakers, and next steps. I wanna talk through some of the program successes, and then talk with you all about ways to improve the program and think about future topics for the series. We've already talked about a couple tonight. So just by way of introduction, this is, the speaker series, this is something that started in January, February of twenty seventeen, the idea of having a speaker series, and the idea was to educate the planning commission on emerging ideas in urban planning, but also provide the group a space to have discussions when it wasn't under the spotlight of a specific or a particular application. I think also some of the things that aren't written in this about benefits of the program is that the planning commission meeting is one that is taped, and we are working to get back to live streaming mode for you all. So this is a conversation that benefits not just the, the seven people that are sitting at the table, but also the wider audience that tunes into the planning commission meetings. I think we can also, and I'll put this marker down for, for an improvement in the speaker series now, thinking about other groups that are interested in the planning commission work, planning commissions work items, that could be a good opening for a joint work session with these groups, to have a speaker come in, have a joint work session on something that's of interest to that group, and then have fourteen people bouncing ideas around for a few minutes, so that when that work item comes up, maybe in a couple months, a couple quarters, that there's already a shared understanding or some shared thought process going on. So with that, I wanna look at previous speakers, and here I wanna give thanks to Ms. G., who, who went through the meeting minutes and found these groups. Going back to June of twenty seventeen, the first group, talking about transportation to van management, that was Shanna Johnson and Four Square. Then in October sixteen, we heard from Paul Gilbert, the Executive Director of Nova Parks. And then in this calendar year, February five and March five, talking about land conservation, from Andrea, Andrea Reese with the NVCT, and most recently, two sessions ago, Rich Dooley talked about Arlington Seapace Program. So next steps, I think some conversations or some, some questions to answer for the speaker series. How much time does the planning commission wanna see these things taking up on the agenda? How often does the group wanna have these things? And then thinking about joint work sessions and topics of interest to the group.
Well, let me start and sort of repeat a, a little bit of what Mr. Stoddard said. This was, this was an idea I thought was important a year ago, and we started it. I was pleased to see the way it developed. We, we had a slow start, it was not, you know, really well planned. I was hoping that this year, through this exercise and this meeting, we could, we could put a little bit more structure to it. And it can be, you know, to understand what we thought, you know, went well and what didn't. Should we be setting much more stringent time constraints because of our agenda? At one point, we made a, a mid-year adjustment where we were having public comment first, and then the speaker series, and then we said, "Look, that's not really fair to the guests", so we changed that around. So I'm looking to see if, if there's some opinions in that respect, to say, "That was good, but these are topics I'm interested in", or maybe it's, we have something like one every other month, would be a reasonable, you know, six over the course of a year. Maybe, and in the other months, we bring in another one of these groups that we are liaisons to, and, and say, "Let's hear from them", let's get a report from the CACT one month, let's get a report from the Historical Commission the other month, so maybe it's six and six. Stuff like that, where, where I think this has a real benefit, I think it's helpful. My vision of it originally was sort of fifteen to twenty minutes. The last one we had went much longer than that, probably about double that. It seemed very long to me.
But that was so beneficial.
Yeah, it was interesting. It was definitely interesting. So I wanna get some feedback about it, and then really topics, and see if this year we can add a little bit more structure to it, as opposed to just trying it out in the way that we did last year. So, I was pleased with how it began. I learned a lot in these, these four sessions, but it did not have a consistency to it, it did not have a, a real formal format in saying, "You have twenty minutes to, to speak to us", so I, I wanted to get some feedback on that, and I think it's valuable. My plan is to continue it, but just how can we improve it, and what topics do we wanna hear about?
I thought it was good. I think that, towards of timing, I think it, I think we should have the speaker go first in the agenda, but it would be great if we could advertise, like, it's always awkward when we have a speaker and something for the public, and the public's sitting there, and they maybe don't care about the speaker, and I feel like we sometimes are able to advertise, "Hey, the meeting starts at seven thirty" or whatever, public items are gonna start at eight, or something like that, like, so that, and then we adhere to that, so we know the speaker's only, is gonna take a half an hour. We never know how long public comment's gonna take, so you can't really tell the speaker, show up at a certain time. So have them go first, but hold off on the, if there's a, if there's no public item, it's not a big deal. But, you know, like, I always feel awkward when we're sitting through some, what's interesting to us, speaker series, where the public is there waiting to give their three minutes, and they're like, "Wow, I have to listen to this", so I'd love to do that. I think shorter is a little better than longer, but I guess it depends on the topic. That last one was, was interesting, but also would have been as interesting to me if it was half as long, I would have gotten the same amount of information. I mean, I think that guy was great, and I don't, not to be critical of it, but, and I think the hard part is, obviously, finding good speakers who are willing to come give up their time. Do we know if the future City Hall will have the capabilities to host a speaker virtually over the internet?
Oh, I have not been looking into really the IT setup so much at the council chambers.
Across that bridge, we get to it, but that would, I think, open up the ability to get speakers from all across the country to come in and give us a half an hour live chat kinda thing. But if that's not technically possible, then, well, we're living in the last century, but that's cool.
Sixteen ninety-nine.
Could do it on my phone or something.
I think overall, the speaker series is good. I think we do have to be careful about, right, just make sure we don't, try not, I mean, sometimes it's unavoidable, but try to schedule on a day where we have to take a major action on something, and it's gonna be a busy agenda. You know, I think the speaker series is good to fill in the meetings where we don't have a lot of formal action to take, and to try to schedule it carefully, so that, you know, right, cuz it's, it's, we wanna get the speaker our, our full attention, but I don't wanna feel like, you know, either he has to go at the end, or he's going before, and people are sitting around, so either way, scheduling him on a lighter day, if possible, or him or.
We, we have tried to do that on some items. I know, actually, Ms. Reese was very accommodating. We actually bumped her from a meeting, so I think we had the public hearing on Broad and Washington scheduled, and we realized that that was gonna be a conflict, that we didn't want, you know, twenty people waiting behind a speaker. On the flip side, we didn't want a speaker waiting through, you know, twenty public comments.
Well, I love this idea, I don't know if you said it, put words in your mouth, but of reverse engineering, kind of the topics that we wanna look at. We know that something's coming up, some point down the schedule, let's see if we can schedule somebody who can talk about that three months in advance, or, or something. And I think, depending on the time, and we, there's so much resources here in this region. I'm sure we all know lots of folks who can at least address some of these issues, so I don't think we need to, I don't think getting folks is gonna be that hard, if we just know ahead of time what we want them to talk about.
Something I was thinking about would be any possibility of doing a, something that would be jointly interesting to us and to the EDA, which might be longer than a speaker thing, but I, I just keep thinking that there's so much overlapping that there's, and particularly with the big situation with the West End development, but that there might be some overlapping of, of conversations. The other one that I was thinking of was that I saw that the Architecture Advisory Board was talking about design guidelines again, and wanting, and that was in there, remember that? And they were talking about revisions on the design guidelines, and that would be rather, you know, I don't know. I was just, just throwing these things out of things that I've heard in different places along the way, and, and of course, you know, working with other boards and commissions, and of course, the other thing would always be, what in the world can we do about affordable housing, you know? That's a biggie all the way around.
So maybe I'll, I'll ask Ms. Ruzzi first about AEB and the design guidelines. Have you, have you, I know you help staff that group, have you heard anything about their interest in updating the design guidelines?
Not recently. It did come up a couple of years ago, and they didn't seem really interested then.
I thought I saw something in the, the meeting, the notes that came in from the meeting to the city council.
Oh, you mean in their goals?
Yeah.
Is it on there? I don't remember seeing it on there. I wanted to update the design guidelines.
That kinda hit me.
I, I think the design guidelines, they are a good document. When you look back, I think they were adopted in the nineties.
Two thousand one.
Early two thousands. And they were pretty progressive for their time, and they were pretty forward-looking for the city in terms of how to lay out a site, where to put the parking, the importance of, of making sure things connect across property lines. I think it could be due for a refresh about sort of what's going on in the city today, in terms of how are things looking.
I have no idea how painful it was back then, but, I mean, it was really painful.
Well, the advantage is that there's already something in place, and so it may be that this is something that, especially if there's still some people with, with memories of the, the first process, it may be possible to simply update some of these things.
It's just something that's out there, and people keep bringing it up a lot about design, you know, when things come in, this is, and, you know, I don't think we've paid much attention to any of it, whether I really want to, but, you know, I'm just saying.
I will add, though, there's been a strong interest on the AEB about development projects being context-sensitive and historical architecture and historical City of Falls Church-sensitive. There was difficulty, I think, on the board defining that context, or what is City of Falls Church, but bricks was something, a dominant piece of that conversation. Could be focused on brick design. That, that's been on their interest list, I think, but yeah.
The, thinking about things that might be of joint interest to the EDA, I think we talked about parking standards earlier today. Something else that was on the planning commission speaker series agenda previously, and the, and the, the EDA, I think, sort of stepped in on the conversation, and that was getting an update on the city's fiscal impact model. That that's something that I think would be of interest to both groups. The EDA is, is sort of the keeper of that model, but obviously, the planning commission is, is having a large role in reviewing those numbers.
All these items, I think, are very, the general public would be receptive to, I think we could aggressively promote them. I don't know how many people would show up for something, but I think you would get some people to, to be here. There's no reason, the city shouldn't be kind of the hallmark of planning thought and practice, right? There's no reason we can't do that.
Right. We've talked a little bit, there was, apparently on FCC TV, there is open air time where people are looking to get education out to the general public, so it could be that the speaker series, we could cut the tape of the planning commission meeting and run those at different times during the day, that this could be really quite the thing. Did you catch that, did you catch that rerun of the speaker series?
Somebody knows when anything's on, but come on.
Who's their ratings?
Yeah, I mean, who wants to watch a twenty-point blowout in the first round of the NCAA? We'll just.
So.
I know that these probably would be longer than our individual meetings, but I just wanted to get it out there.
So that was where I wanna say, I, I think for outsiders, speakers, my feeling is to indicate to them that fifteen to twenty minutes is about right, that's my sense. If they have something that they, is already prepared, and, you know, they need a little bit more time, that's fine. I think Mr. Rankin's idea about saying, "We expect the speaker, you know, meeting starts at seven thirty, speaker goes from seven-ten to seven-twenty-five or seven-thirty, and then we're gonna hear public comment", is a good idea, so that people are not showing up a half hour earlier than they need to, if they're just trying to get their three minutes on, on the, the record. I know that's happened on more than one occasion. And I do think that in those times where we don't have speakers, that if we make a invite list, I mean, we need to maybe prioritize this based on importance, and I can potentially just do that with Mr. Stoddard, say, "Let's, let's invite these groups to speak to us, and, and just give us a report on the things that is important to them and what they're working on", and maybe it is, I mentioned that earlier, a few minutes ago, saying, maybe we have six speakers and six invites a year to boards and commissions that we are liaison to, and not everyone's gonna take us up on it. They may not wanna prepare something, or may want, not think it's important to present to the planning commission, but I would like this to be a, a forum for receiving knowledge and information on what's happening in the community, and it's a little easier to, to facilitate than the city council in some cases. Our agendas allow it. And if there are ties in, tie into the television and recordings, then I think, you know, even better. So, I think we have a few topics that we, that we talked about, I saw you writing them down, but this, this is fluid, like, sending topics to myself or, or the staff, that can just be, Mr. Stevens has sent me numerous over the last year, and that doesn't need to be at a meeting. They're all on environmental, oddly enough. But, yeah, just send those on. I mean, that's, I, I think, and we can get some time, and if we can be thoughtful, as Rob said, where we can give some heads up and advertise it in a way that this, maybe people will attend, at least these other speakers. If we can have a somewhat of a schedule, maybe we, in the next month, we develop a schedule of what we'd like to see over the next three months, and then we can just sort of work around that, cuz it does take some time to get these, even though there's a lot of resources. I know from the past year that it's not.
Availability.
Super easy to make this all work. And I had some, had some ideas about some very specific things to Falls Church. I, I had approached at one point Walter Phillips and said, "I'm, I'm interested in, you know, the considerations when you're talking about civil design and, and your efforts. You come before us every, you know, application, it seems to me, that what things are you looking at specifically in your design", so not related to a specific application. I thought that that could be helpful, that real practical knowledge about the City of Falls Church and what, what's unique about our city from the various engineering issues, or whether it's the brick that they need to consider, or, or guidelines that make the applications to our city unique. I'd like to have that information, so I can use it when considering. So, and if there's some gaps, something that just came to mind just now is, maybe it's a report from the staff on a topic that you think is interesting or important, or on the cutting edge, that it would be good for us, the planning commission, to have. So, you know, maybe something that just piques your interest, and you want an outlet to communicate to us or the community, that if we're, if we're light on a speaker, and, and you're passionate about something, that you think could be helpful, I, I see no reason for there not being an opportunity for you to speak to us about that, outside of a specific application, so.
I just had an idea about using TV, is that we, we always have our meetings recorded, but we could have these speaker series with the topic, and people, and the recording could be there like, like under Granicus, and people could just click on it, rather than waiting for Channel eleven, cuz God only knows. Nobody knows when anything's happening there, but that might be.
So you're saying not just running on the TV, but also something you could just click on, and you could say, "Here's the, the planning commission speaker series".
Yeah, and then people, if they were interested in that subject. And then people, if they were interested in that subject, they could click on it and see what was said under it.
Yeah, I, look, I think that's a great idea. And all of these things together make the Planning Commissioner, Planning Commission, you know, a leader in this kind of information in the community about sort of thought leaders and, and advancing things in the, in the city, not just.
At a retreat.
Instead of reacting exactly in retreat.
Actually, in my defense, one of my recommendations was Stuart Schwartz, who is very well-known to address the issue of smart growth. So I would offer that and Mr. Quinteros has a particular insight into Mr. Schwartz since he's well-connected to the Coalition for Smarter Growth.
Yeah. So let's send along those ideas. I mean, just to, whether it be Paul or myself or anyone, if you have those, it doesn't have to be tonight, but let's see if we can get something more formalized over the next few months and continue that on with an eye towards that. If something's interesting to you or something you read in, in one of these magazines here, say, oh, this would be interesting. I think there's plenty of resources for us to draw on.
There will be something coming up about, uh, public art somewhere down the line from the Arts and Culture Group.
It's a great topic for a speaker. It's great. Give you a lot of interest in that.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that, that's something that's really gotta be pulled together. And I know there's some, some attempts at doing that. Bob Cram is back in action now. She's at the meeting for Arts and Culture Group Thursday morning. And, um, yeah.
Yeah, I do think public art is important, that it's a way a community can express its values to other people. But I think oftentimes people who live here maybe already know the values of Falls Church, but I think public art is where you can express them and enjoy them and, and pass them on to the next generation that moves into the city. You know, we talk about sort of the welcome packet, the idea that when people come here, can we tell them the history that we're not trying to erase the history of the city, we're trying to add to the history of the city. And so it's important that you put your mark on, on what's important and, and public art can do that.
One other request that I think might be handy is to get just on our, when our agendas are sent out, but just information that comes from the EDA office as to what's opening, what's closing. Becky has that every single month. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of times you all don't know when things, and people are interested in that.
They come to me about that all the time.
Yeah, yeah. So that, I mean, that's easy just to, you know, put out.
Yeah, we. Right.
Cause that's good information.
Yes. So one of the things I am looking to, to do is, is get back to a normal reporting scheme or method for you all so that, so that you all as a group are kept up to date. Where are development projects in the pipeline? What's going on with major CIP efforts? And also what's going on in terms of businesses opening and or closing? One of the advantages of the City Hall relocation is that Becky's desk, except for the cardboard box we just put in between them, will be touching. So it's gonna be very easy for us to share information. We needed some, we, we're both on the phone a lot, so we needed some sound attenuation. And rather than waiting for a purchase order, we found an empty cardboard box that a large whiteboard had been delivered in. It's good efficiency. It's also where we're storing our flip charts, since we don't have a closet. So we're using that also as a storage cabinet as well.
Public art.
Well, that blocks the sound more because it's full.
Right. It's, it's now got more, more mass to it. So it's, um, yeah.
Sounds very, sounds very harmonious.
It's a hot summer camp over there.
That is, actually, that was John Boyle's suggestion, that he said, you know, how we deal with and how we perform at this move is gonna depend on how we approach it. So if we all treat it as, I'm away at camp for a year and this is what I got done, I'm a lot happier. Something we're looking forward to than something put upon us.
Well, we used to, and it's been a while, but Mr. Snyder used to have a fairly organized format of planning directors' reports. And maybe it's, you know, what's opening and closing or what, what, maybe something that makes your, your report easier. That say, hey, this is the five topics we're gonna topic to touch upon real quickly. And then we have some continuity there. But that's up to you however you wanna do those.
Knowledge.
Okay. I think we covered the Speaker Series unless anyone else has any comments about it.
Okay, great. Made up time.
Made up a little time, yeah. We were far, way behind.
Right.
And I'm excited about this next issue.
So, item number four on your agenda is, in the agenda, it's titled Priority Issues for Planning Commission Review by Application Type. It's a long title. But the idea is something that the chair mentioned earlier, that talking to Walter Phillips or other groups, when these different kinds of applications come forward, what are the kinds of questions that the Planning Commission should be asking? So in your packet, there is a memo with some attachments. The memo is titled Planning Commission Review Priorities. Looks like this. The subjects are, I'm sorry, the subheading titles, introduction, draft priorities, and then on the back page, feedback. So I don't want to describe the whole thing. I wanna leave some of that for Carly, since she's the one who did the work to put this together. Rather, I just wanna introduce the item, that the Planning Commission sees different kinds of applications. They see special exceptions, they see site plans, they see subdivisions. And on all of these things, the Planning Commission has less or more authority as well as less or more flexibility in what they comment on. And the applicant may have more or less cause to work with or, or not work with the Planning Commission on those things. And so some of this is having a conversation so that the Planning Commission can be asking the right kinds of questions to have the biggest impact or the most impact they can have based on the application before them. That, for example, when an SE is before you all, that's a very open and fluid conversation. So that's a time to have big picture questions. When a subdivision is before you, that's a fairly prescribed procedure. And so you can ask questions, but it won't have much impact. And so that's what this is about. And this is research not just in the city's code, but also the land use law handbook, which is produced in Virginia by Albemarle County. It's a wonderful resource and there are some of those things attached to, the memo is attachments as well. But maybe I should pause here and, and turn it over to Carly at this point.
Okay. So I'll just start with the spreadsheet here. So it was arranged, starting on that left-hand column with the level of authority. And as you go down, the type of applications that you all see starts at legislative and then goes down to ministerial. So comp plan, rezoning, special exceptions, site plan and subdivision. And then there's some definitions at the bottom from that land, land use law book for those type of discretion types. So, and then moving over to the third column for the guiding documents, that's what staff looks at when we review these different types of applications. And then what we address in our staff reports as to how or how not the application is meeting the goals or the standards in all of those documents. So you'll kinda see as it goes down, it kinda, it builds and then, but then when you get back down to subdivision, there's really a limited purview in which we review subdivisions against. And that's basically just zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. So then moving over to the guiding questions. So for example, the comprehensive plan amendments, when we receive an amendment application, we obviously look at, will that meet the goals and policies of the existing comp plan? And then sometimes there's an applicable small area plan associated with it that we will review as well. And so then when we're writing up a staff report and the resolution for a comp plan amendment, there's three questions, or three criteria that we need to see at least one of those are met. And those criteria come from the Planning Commission's adopted rules of procedures. You've all seen those in the staff reports and then also in the resolution. If significant changes have occurred, plan provisions and reasonably limit the ability to achieve plan objectives or the plan includes oversights or inconsistencies that the proposed amendment could satisfy. Moving down to the rezoning, we also look obviously if it's gonna be consistent with the comp plan in the future land use map. And then sometimes if, if it's conditional rezoning and there's proffers, how do they, how do those further implement some of those broader goals? Special exception is all of the above. And then we also have the added criteria in the special exception sections. And then as well as we look at design guidelines and our new streetscape standards. And those purposes and items that you see listed in those come directly from those documents. Site plan, you start really getting, looking into, does it meet the code requirements? But then also we do look at, does it support good urban design? Does it meet multimodal transportation and stormwater? Some of those items that we think make for good, good site plan development. And a lot of that also comes from the design guidelines and streetscape standards. And then finally, the kind of simplest one is the subdivision ordinance. Cause there is, if you look at some of the other sections of the land use law book, it really does say that once you get to subdivision, all those questions regarding land use and those kind of things have already been addressed in your comp plan. So you're really just checking boxes to make sure it meets code. But we do have a little, I think we can ask, does it provide feasible building envelopes? Can we require sidewalk installation? Can we perhaps ask for a tree canopy preservation, since we are seeing a lot of great apartments come in and basically clear cut the lots? These are things that we can ask and maybe the applicant will, would agree to those, but essentially if they meet the code, they're, they're done.
Right, but on the Lincoln Avenue subdivision, I mean, that was, that's a good example.
Yeah.
Of where technically they found a way to configure the lots to meet, you know, the ordinance, but it was questionable whether or not it was a feasible building envelope.
Right.
And we called them on that and the guy was kinda upset about it, if everyone recalls. But I think that was, I still think that was a good move on our part because I think that we might not have been able to prevent the subdivision, right? But we could try to make it less, in my opinion, less bad. You know, but, but I think that's a good example where even for, even for an action that is ministerial or administrative, we should still always, I mean, listen, in some jurisdictions, the Planning Commission doesn't hear subdivisions. I still, there's gotta be a reason why we hear them here. It's in the charter, right, that we hear them? So, you know, otherwise it could be a staff decision, it would be purely administrative. But there's a reason it comes to us. So I think we should always, you know, not be afraid to, you know, to give our opinion, even on something like a subdivision. And that one, I think, is a great example because it was a bad subdivision, in my opinion. Maybe we should work on the, looking at the ordinance to fix our way we treat pipe stem lots. But, but anyway, so, I thought I would chime in there.
Would just say, as a relative newbie, this was very helpful.
Yeah, this is really.
And on day one, if, coming into this, if I'd had this, I think it would have been pretty good.
Plus the fact you can see how your reports follow all this. I mean, this is your, your outline on how you write your reports. But I'm immediately seeing design guidelines, streetscape standards, tree canopy. All of those are things that are dealing with other boards and commissions in some way or matter that, you know, we could find out. Particularly, we're always upset about the clear cutting and, you know, whether we can save any trees on a lot always seems like it's easier to, for anybody, of course, to clear cut. But, and it says not required by code, maybe, you know, I don't know. There's a lot of things that are in here that you can see where, you know, maybe we need to look at the, lots of the standards again.
I believe the tree condition.
Become more familiar with them as a set of standards.
I know, and I'm sure Mr. Stevens can talk to this. I know the tree commission is interested in beefing up our landscaping code and.
And, and of course sidewalks and tree beds. And we've had quite a bit of disagreement on that kind, kind of stuff. So another area of understanding each other more or something.
Yeah, look, thank you very much for organizing and putting this together.
Great. This is beautiful.
One of the objectives I was hoping to achieve with this as well is to maximize our power as a planning commission and working with staff in a way that is symbiotic. What I, what I think happens in some cases is their ability to say, look, we kind of want to see this, or we are generally looking at these documents. And then it comes to us and we have, we, we have the power to sort of request changes in a different way than they can. And that if we can be on the same page and, and understand our purview better, then we can guide the applicant with a different type of power than the staff does. We have the power of stopping the process. If it, if we, we say this doesn't, this doesn't get our recommendation, well, it can be overcome by super majority. It makes it much, much more, by the city council, it makes it much more difficult. So if we can wield that power more effectively by understanding the guide by which we're working with, I think that's a helpful place for us to be as opposed to, you know, sometimes I find myself not agreeing with one part of the application, but the overall plan is a good one. And so now I'm in this place where, yes, I wanna see this change, but I don't wanna lose the rest of the application. I'm not willing to say a no vote for something that's overall generally pretty good, even though they may have something that I don't like. And using these kind of questions, I feel like it gives us some, some power to make these changes on a more, if, if I can understand this better, which is what the, the point of this document is, we can say, no, we, you know, these are areas that are really important to us. And if you don't make these changes, then there'll be, you know, potential consequences for that. So that was the, the objective and I think you, you captured that through this work here. So.
You gonna write a textbook using this?
No. Well, I will say, it was a difficult task for me, for my brain. There's too many things. I was like, we look at everything. We're supposed to look at everything. How do we narrow it down?
Well, this is exactly the format you use. I can see it, you know?
Carly and I had quite a few conversations about how do we get this onto a one-page document? And the way we achieve that is by still attaching other things out of the land use handbook. And so for those who maybe haven't been to, to planning school in a while or who haven't been there yet, there's chapter eight, the differences among legislative, administrative and quasi judicial acts. And, and these things.
Review.
One of the challenges, I think, one of the things that can help in this exercise of trying to abstract these conversations to what are the larger permitting principles and why is this good for the community, is that we can talk about, look, this is a big picture item, it has a big impact on the city and therefore we have a lot of discretion in what happens. Versus, you know, these things have already been established in city code about what people's property rights are and how they can use their land. This is the conversation that comes up with subdivisions all the time, that there is a need to be aware of people's concerns in the neighborhood about growing development. On the same, by the same token, you know, these people own land, they have a right to develop under the city code. And just in terms of the efficiency of the Planning Commission's meetings, do you wanna spend 35 minutes or 45 minutes on each subdivision? Or do you wanna have some information that maybe goes out in the package, especially if it's going out a week beforehand? People have the opportunity to become familiar with what's going on.
Yeah, if we can streamline the process on any of these meetings, make them shorter and, and be much more direct with our questioning, then that's a, that's a win for everybody, I think. Yeah, this, I mean, we've talked about the subdivisions. I don't, we had begun in one of our meetings to sort of get into it. I'm willing to have that conversation a little bit more tonight if, if, if you want. But it is a source of real frustration, I know, for all the commissioners or, at least for me, so let me just speak for myself, where as I see, and it is, you know, been validated here, we don't have that much flexibility. I, I, these three here you added at the end are good areas for me to, to think about. I mean, it was asked and it was changed on that Lincoln Avenue, I thought for the better. Less bad, as, as you put it. But these are specific questions I can make some comments about or ask questions and say. The feasibility of the building envelope, that's a big one. It allows me some real, some real pushback, ability to push back for all of us.
I know what we did.
It is, but I, you know, I didn't know what our power was. I felt fairly bad.
Stuff like, wow, we think pipe stems are terrible. Well, we can't, I mean, the code allows them, so.
Correct. The code allows up to two pipe stems out of an existing lot.
Yeah. So I think those are the ones where we're like, you know, the building envelope's fine, all the setbacks are fine, the size of the lot is fine, it's pipe stem into your neighbor's backyard, I don't, I mean.
Well, the, it's exactly right. So. So if we can streamline the process, and so instead of coming here and all of us lamenting how much we hate pipes, pipe stems, the report says, pipe stems are allowed, and then we can ask maybe this question, you know, the, the building envelope, if that's relevant.
Well, that's what we told that applicant. I mean, you know, we acknowledged that, you know, we weren't saying, no, you can't subdivide, but we were saying that we didn't like the configuration he had. Cause it wasn't the only way to do it, really. I guess he wound up changing, right? I missed the meeting when we voted on that, I think.
He changed.
He actually reduced the building envelope.
He committed, he committed to a certain width or something.
He, he reduced the building envelope.
Yeah, it wouldn't be as narrow, it wouldn't be as, uh.
And he was happy. In terms of, in terms of the setback.
Right, no, and so.
So he actually voluntarily committed to a reduction.
That's what we did our job on that one, even though, you know, he, we were going to approve something there, but the fact that it made it better.
If he'd come back without any changes, I gather we would've just approved it.
I don't know.
No, well, I mean, based on this chart, we pretty much would've had to.
Yeah, you would've had to.
Yeah, this is right here, failure to act correctly will be found to be arbitrary and egregious.
I don't think you would do that.
That's a pretty strong statement that we would've had to.
Well, I mean, sometimes I think, you know, when they hear, I mean, as someone who works on both sides of the table, you know, I know sometimes hearing it from the commission is different than hearing it from staff. I'm sure you guys have times where you, I know you've said things like that to applicants and they ignore it. But sometimes when they hear it from the commission, they might take it more seriously when they realize, okay, well, now I'm gonna have to get deferred or get delayed. I don't know if you had any conversations with that particular applicant, but in general, I know sometimes that it does make a difference sometimes to hear it. Um, you know, cause sometimes applicants can, they may dismiss a staff comment thinking, well, I don't have to listen to that, cause I, I'm just gonna get an approval anyway. But then when they hear it from us, it makes a difference, so.
Well, we can certainly work with you all to communicate what we see as, uh, the top priorities according to these, uh, questions. But I think you're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Krasner, that what the, the questions the planning commission or, or the council ask, they direct, uh, the applicant's, uh, actions on the next submission. So if they come in for the first submission and the city has a bunch of adopted, uh, pro multimodal transportation documents, and, uh, to a member, uh, everybody asks the question about how many automobile parking spaces do you have? The applicant's not putting any money in bikes or buses or sidewalks, they're putting all their money in parking because that's the question they heard. So, uh, I think it is important to be aware that the questions you ask are the ones that they'll respond to. And so I think, uh, from that idea of sort of staff highlighting things, these are the things that, that guide us, and it's a substantial list of documents. Um, and, uh, these are the things that, uh, talk about what the city policy is, and that's what, uh, city, uh, staff is taking as, as directives during their review. Uh, we are folding in, of course, best planning practices as well, and so we can highlight for you, uh, either in staff reports or, or whatever method works, uh, sort of what we see as the, the top list of items that ought to get reviewed, uh, when it comes before you.
That would be great. Um, I'm wondering if it makes sense, uh, I haven't really thought this through, uh, but just reacting to what Mr. Krasner said about, um, delaying an application, if there's also a piece of the report that says, um, you know, I don't have the right word, but sort of leverage points for the planning commission should they be unhappy with the submission? And maybe it's nothing more than delay. Maybe it's, it's saying that if this is not satisfactory, we're gonna push this off further.
The planning commission has the option of.
Exactly, and that, and even if it's in writing and says that you could delay it, and they know that's a potential threat, and we see it in the report, that may, um, inspire them to be more receptive. Uh, cause I haven't really thought about our leverage points, but if it's there and, uh, I'm aware of it, and they're aware that I'm aware of it, then maybe, uh, a quick reference to, hey, if we're not all cool with this, you wanna delay this a month, uh, and that, that could be a real, um, I mean, the goal here is for us to get what we're looking for for the city, and, uh, I'm not sure I'm always aware of what, what our power is.
Which we could, I know.
Well, I guess the good thing, like in the Lincoln, is he did come back with the drawing of what the house would look like, and by adding a porch and some bay windows, it was a lot better than we all thought it was gonna be, so, less bad.
That one worked, that one worked.
Oh, it was good, I think that worked.
So, so I think it was a good way of doing it, when, when we have the time to do it. I know sometimes there's a timing thing in there, we can only delay something so long. But it doesn't hurt to put a little delay on there and let them rethink a little bit and come back with more information.
We're not happy, yeah, we're not ready to act, and we should never be shy about doing that, in my opinion.
I thought, I actually thought that was a, that was, went well. We got a little bit better look at what we were doing.
That was a big success, uh, but there, most of the time, they're not.
No.
But I was still kind of left with the question of, okay, we have to do this, but how do we change the bigger issue of, uh, you know, pipe stems and.
Right.
Subdivisions in existing residential neighborhoods and.
Well, the bigger issue of pipe stems would be a code amendment. Uh, and that would be a.
Is that, or is that at a state level that?
No.
You could initiate that. Uh, I know there are other jurisdictions that disallow pipe stems, right?
We've actually done one code change on pipe stems already.
Right, right.
Where you had to have more width and more room, and, and so we're probably actually starting to run out of the number of properties that can meet the current requirements with the update that we did. But, but the only thing that could happen is that we could, we could work out another update of that code, and, you know, we'd have to go through all the public meetings and the council and all that stuff for a code change.
And you risk, you know, the, you know, the pushback can come from a landowner who feels that now, you're taking away a lot that he could potentially have.
Saw that with the substandard thing, which is a more clear cut.
Those can be defended, I mean, those, those, those types of challenges can be defended, but you risk, you know, a takings challenge, you know, someone saying, oh, you're taking, you know, my property value.
Which you would be doing.
Well, but if you, but there's, there's backup in Virginia code to.
Well, maybe you're allowed to diminish value.
If you can point to various other things, you can justify it under certain circumstances, but.
As long as they have some economic recovery, which they, you know, you haven't taken away the basic house or lots.
It's of the value of their land, but when we tightened up the pipe stem last time, you know, it, it almost didn't make it because there was some pushback on it. But we had had a couple really bad pipe stems that just affected neighborhoods, so there was a lot of different neighborhood support to fix it and to make it work better.
I mean, one of the things the city doesn't have is a, um, particularly helpful residential cluster ordinance, that I believe there is an RC district on the books, but it allows something like an acre, an acre and a half of land in order to activate.
Three acre minimum.
Three acre minimum, sorry, it's, it's even bigger than I realized.
Never had.
In other words.
And so it's very difficult to use, and so instead, if you had someone with, uh, let's see, uh, R1A is eleven two fifty, so if you had someone with, uh, yeah, well, with someone that had, right, so if someone had access to two lots or three lots worth of land, but they had to be pipe stems, do you want to have a provision in the code that allows them to develop something other than pipe stems?
No.
Right, well, you're saying if, if pipe stems are terrible, do you permit a few townhouses instead? Would that be better?
Well, what's, you know, I guess the question is, what's more terrible?
That is the.
The other thing that comes up is, are duplexes or triplexes?
Yeah.
I think in R1B, there might even be a duplex.
Well, we have a situation over on.
I don't think we've allowed that yet.
We have a situation where the original homeowners bought the house, two houses and combined them, and now they're being sold separately. And they're combined, yeah, right over on Greenway, huh, right by the school.
Right, that's a duplex, yeah, cause that, the code allows that. If you have enough, like, so much width or so many lots, you can do it.
But that's, that would basically be a duplex.
Yeah.
Which, in essence, I'm not sure.
No, I don't know if that makes sense to have that, yeah, I agree, I don't know.
Well, do we, do we have code allowing for duplexes? I thought we were told we didn't. Oh, we do?
One of the residential.
That one on Greenway is the first I've ever seen, but I don't know.
But I, yeah, but that was a weird situation to begin with.
Yeah.
Well, I think duplexes are better than pipe stems and townhouses.
Yeah, right.
I will say that some of this is wrapped up in the affordability debate in the city, that the harder you make it to develop housing, the more expensive it becomes. So, uh, this is getting at some of that conversation of what's called the missing middle in urban planning circles, that idea that is there something between, um, uh, you know, one point four million dollar single family houses and, um, five hundred thousand dollar condos or six hundred thousand dollar condos? Is there a format in between those things that might, uh, bring some downward pressure on, um, housing?
We have a good number of townhouses in the city, and they're not that cheap either.
Well, and the challenge is.
I mean, the Winter Hills are very small, and they're still not that cheap.
And quite frankly, the challenge is that type of housing puts pressure on the costs, puts pressure on the taxes, which puts pressure, I mean, it's, it's a difficult problem because if you said, hey, let's pop down a bunch of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar townhouses, your school costs are gonna go up a lot, and you gotta pay for those, which might be what we wanna do, but it, that's why I think it's hard. It's not just build the houses and fill them up with people, it's build the houses, fill them up with people, then pay for their, pay for their services. And now you're back at like, oh my gosh, our taxes are going through the roof, uh, and that's an affordability issue there too. So I, I think it's a super complicated challenge for sure without any solutions that cost money.
Yeah, I think that's one reason why we do these multi-use buildings, because we are able to offset the cost of the residential with commercial and retail, and you can't do that in a townhouse complex.
But I think that's why the, I think that's why you're, at the end of the day, for, for affordable housing, you gotta be looking at a program, and it's an investment by the city, and it has a cost that you know about. It's gonna be hard, I think, to do it through market forces, but.
Well, I, in the long run, and we've, this has been talked about over and over again with affordable housing, it would be in the best interests of the city to get Virginia Village bought up by Foster Chousen Corp. or something, because there's enough land there that you could remove those buildings and put twice as many units in a small building, you know, a small multi-use building. But, you know, that takes investment and people willing to, for the long game.
Yeah, I think we, um, uh, we were looking at that, right, we sometimes revisit that ideas in small area plans, so we were looking at that area, uh, recently, and I think when you consider the acre, acre and a half that's in public right of way in that Shirley Street, uh, it's, it's somewhere around four, four and a half acres of land, which is a pretty substantial amount of land in the city.
And what is there, like, is it like twelve buildings with six units or something?
There are four complexes, uh, and I think there are about twenty of them.
Yeah, so.
But all owned individually or most owned individually?
Each of the buildings is owned individually, general, uh, I mean, the buildings are all available for single ownership. Uh, there are some landowners that, that own a few of them.
Yeah, but not like somebody owns eighteen of them.
No, no, I mean, it would be a process.
I think the city still owns one.
I thought we, did we give Lazard's to Atlanta?
I'll have to research whether we still own that one.
I think, so, I think another, somebody else.
I thought Atlanta got those with the resolution of the city center problem, but I don't know.
The only trouble with that is the minute you open up for redevelopment, you know that the expensive stuff is gonna come in, and that's, you know, it'd have to be so controlled, you know, to say, this is exactly what we want, and we're not gonna have a mixed use development on it.
Well, no, no, I mean, that's why I said it would have to be the city or someone like Foster Chousen Corp. or something that would be doing that, because we really need one, you know, affordable building, especially with the building behind Taco Bell that's going to timeout soon.
Right, but.
The field is, uh, I think it's twenty twenty-six, like, eight years, but I think, uh.
Oh, that's about how long it would take to do a project like that.
Well, and there was some talk at the last CDC meeting that bang for your buck, you're better off taking an older structure and rehabbing it and keeping it affordable than building something new. You're never gonna get, you're never gonna get the same.
That's true.
Uh, volume for that, so, you know, the idea they're kicking around there is, you know, we get these new developments, we want six percent units, but if we got cash instead and bought the fields.
And that came up.
Or somehow funded the fields for another twenty years.
That came up at the, uh, town hall meeting on Sunday. A lot about affordable housing, and, uh, so it was pretty, it was right at the end of the meeting, that's something you did miss, or did you get it here?
Well, I heard the, the person from the commission speak.
Okay, okay, but then there was follow-through with a bunch of other speakers, that the fact that, uh, that is, uh, and something that's important to the city, that there's nothing in the budget.
Yeah, I, I think, um, you know, when we talk about, uh, public resources to do things, I think a lot of times the resources that the public has is, uh, setting policies and visions, and then relaxing, um, restrictions on development and investment in the city, that the last two complaint, that the transportation chapter and the parks chapter, they both laid out very grand visions for what the city was gonna have, whether it was a particular mode share goal, uh, or access to these transportation networks, uh, or for parks, this connected network of parks going throughout the city. And then they were both very careful that when they laid out their implementation strategy, the public costs are in updating policies, and then it was all about finding outside sources, whether that's civic sources, private sources, grant sources, to implement the actual actions in them. And I think, uh, housing, it would be, uh, equally challenging to find those resources as in those other efforts, but I think you could do it. And I think that's what the complian, providing, especially in this city, I think that's what complanning is gonna be about. It's gonna be about what do you want to get done, and then what are the tools that are out there besides looking to the city's general fund to get your projects through? Cause I don't think the general fund is gonna be a reliable source, uh, for these extra projects, that it's gonna continue to provide core government services, and that's important. Um, that's what local governments are in the business of, but when you're thinking about changing the city and bringing in resources, I think you're gonna have to look for outside resources.
Let me bring this back to this document really quickly. Uh, what I would like to see, and again, this is another idea that has come to me during this meeting, so, uh, please tell me its practicality, though I think it should be fairly reasonable to achieve. Uh, we list here about seven different documents, and this document is now its own resource. I would like to have, and, uh, this is sort of dovetailing with the speaker series and, and the planning commission being a leadership, a leader in knowledge and information. I'd like to see like a, um, a planning library, uh, online, I'm talking, totally electronic, where we have, uh, it doesn't have to be the basis of where these documents are all stored, but a, a set of links that say, this is how you, in, on the planning page or in the planning, well, really the planning page, that says, uh, here's a link to the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, small area plans, uh, this document itself, and then any of the other sort of key documents that we think is, maybe there's, there's different sections that say, these are the city's documents, and then another that say best practices and planning, maybe another for, we talked about watching the speaker series, uh, links to that, but really make it a knowledge repository, even if it's not stored there, just links to it. Uh, I think these documents are a must. If you're a, a public, uh, per, member of the public and you wanna know about an issue that's coming up, a special exception, you should be able to be, go to the planning page and find any one of these, uh, seven documents fairly easily. Um, and I think there's a lot more that we could put on here, sort, sort of a electronic library of links, not, not, we don't have to have the data storage.
We have started that, I, I think we could take it the next step, that off the planning page, and we gotta figure out a way to advertise this more, uh, but there is a page for future planning, uh, and it has, here's the comp plan, here's the smaller plans, here's the master plans, here's studies and reports.
All right, this is, I'm not coming up with anything revolutionary, so if you.
No, I think we need to find a way to advertise that so people know it's there. I think it, it could be as simple as, as maybe including a link in our staff reports so that, um, it may not be particularly, I, it, it would be relevant to a particular application, but it would allow people to explore this information. It's about getting that information out there. Cause I think that's always the challenge. We can find information, and maybe it's a clever way of branding it. I like the idea of calling it the planning library, um, that sort of people know what a library is versus if I tell them, well, here's a page with a bunch of links. Well, I've, I've heard of the internet before, um, is there something more interesting about it?
Yeah, I mean, it could be further refined, as I said, maybe some articles on best practices or our speaker series or links to our, you know, the, these, these particular twenty-minute speeches that we, that you can a- access, uh, through Granicus or some MP four format.
Yeah, I just kind of crossed my mind, what does the architectural advisory board look for, look at? What, what do they, what questions are they asking? You know, how, how do they look at a development? Cause we've never really heard from them, maybe what.
There's a, a number, there's a number of things they look at that's outlined in the code, in the charter, um, yeah, but I think, and design guidelines is another one they look at, but the design guidelines, core principles do cover those things that is outlined in the, this, the zoning, the charter. Um, so, yeah, I think it would be helpful to include it in that library or the resource.
But, but I wanna, I'm agreeing with all that, but I wanna include this and maybe your work plan, the, the one with the green bars, and stuff like that, so that the public can know what's, what's going on, and I can too, if I, you know, don't have all my metal filing cabinets full of stuff.
There was, there's been a, suddenly work plan is the, the term of the day. I know city council is trying to up their game when it comes to work plans, they're, they're requesting quarterly reporting from city manager's office on, on status of their work plan. The CACT put together a work plan a couple of years ago, and they've been doing pretty good about following that. The EDA has come up with one for years. Here we are coming up with one for the planning commission. I think this is gonna be interesting with lots of groups coming up with work plans as they're going to be a way to sort of consolidate these things, so that it's not-
I hope so.
-six work plans, but it's, everybody's in agreement that you've got a council driving towards something, and boards and commissions advising and carrying the water on something, so you got a city staff that's carrying out the professional work associated with those. It'll, it'll be a very interesting time for the city to, to organize around these principles and move things forward. And you'll see right now, if you compare all the various work plans, you'll see some inconsistencies in terms of sort of when the planning commission thinks a comp plan change is going through versus the council, and that's obviously gonna get hashed out over time, but I think it's, it's just part of the growing process of everybody getting in to this game of sort of organizing.
All right. Well, thank you for this, this is really helpful.
So that was our last item on the retreat agenda. Are there anything, other things you wanted to bring up?
There's nothing I want to bring up, I mean, you and I worked very hard on this agenda, and I'm, again, really appreciate all the work by all the staff and you all putting this together and making our conversations actually, you know, come together in a fairly efficient three-hour session. But I definitely want to turn it over to anybody else, if they have comments or, or topics that you think have just been on your mind, that you want to talk about in a much more open forum, things that you'd like to see changed, or, or you just haven't addressed.
I think this has been a really good meeting.
I do too. I, I do want to give thanks, that as you look around the room, you're seeing the people who make these packages happen, that I may be up here talking about them, but they're the ones actually putting the content in them. So I'm very appreciative of everyone who does their work, as well as sort of coming out, as well as coming out tonight, to engage in this conversation and have this sense of, of where staff coming from, where's the planning commission trying to go.
Yeah, no, I, let me restate it again, just how appreciative I am, I, I always think our, our planning department does an amazing job, based on, you know, the limited resources, but the, the materials that we receive, I think are first-rate and, you know, comparable to much larger jurisdictions, and the thought and the detail. And again, I've been doing this for 10 years and been pleased with the work that has consistently come across my-
Right, right, right.
-doorstep as we planned for these meetings, so thank you, everybody, for your really hard work. It shows, and makes our job a little, a lot easier.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think it was with Tim we were talking, that the conversations in this room have been much more productive because of the space than, than they've ever been, you know, sitting out on the dais.
You mean this configuration in terms of the U shape versus the sitting in a line and you can't see each other's faces?
Right, 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 right.
Basic room layout.[1771.03]